Thank you, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, laws, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I wish to advise councillor Griffiths to be absent, so move that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Cook that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the motion of appreciation at item two on the agenda. Lord Mayor, would you please move the motion?
Mr Chair, as this is the last council meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contribution that they have made during 2022 despite the challenges of the pandemic and the flood to help make Brisbane even better.
Seconded. Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cassidy that as this is the last council meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contribution they have made during 2022 despite the challenges of the pandemic and the flood to help Brisbane, to help make Brisbane even better. Lord Mayor.
Well, one thing I think is fair to say, Mr Chair, is that all of us in Brisbane City Council at every level is genuinely motivated to make Brisbane a better place. And whether it's the councillors who serve in these elected roles, whether it's the executive management team and the CEO, or whether it is the frontline workers and the dedicated council staff who do a wonderful job for our city, that motivation goes well above and beyond just simply doing a job. Yes, there are, at the moment in particular, plenty of other jobs available out there in the community and in many cases higher paying jobs that our officers and staff and managers could do, but they choose to work in this organisation because it is something more than just a job. It is an organisation that genuinely stays true to its motto, dedicated to a better Brisbane, and I see that every day in the work that our officers do at all levels. And we know that, I guess, motivations when it comes to work are tested in challenging times. And this is a year that has given up more challenges and thrown up more challenges than most years. And in fact, it's hard to think of another year in the city's history that has been more challenging and more the opposite to business as usual. We started the year with the big Omnicrom wave in the community in January, and then we saw that roll on into the floods in February. We saw this organisation literally drop everything that they were doing in a day-to-day sense, roll up the sleeves, and get on with that flood recovery and response, and then on top of that, the rebuilding effort that's had to happen. And so this is on top of what has already been a record year when it comes to the programme of work that has been funded. And so a record year in terms of business as usual, projects and initiatives and so many programmes across the city add to that a pandemic and a flood. And so I have unlimited and immense gratitude for every single one of our council staff for what they've done in an incredibly challenging year. And you see it in the individual stories of people who just love this city and they work each day, as I said, to make it a better place. Some of our council staff were flooded themselves, their homes were flooded, yet they rolled up the sleeves to support the rest of the community. Some of our council staff were out there in the rain, literally before the waters have even subsided, potentially in situations that were incredibly dangerous, but they came, they did what, not only what was expected of them, but they went above and beyond. And so there are countless stories that we have seen. So I guess as we close the year, my simple message to everyone in this organisation is thank you. Thank you for your dedication to our city and its residents. Thank you for what you've done in a challenging year. And no matter what your role is in Brisbane City Council, every single role is important. And every single role does make a difference. This organisation, obviously, as the largest council in Australia, has in excess of 10,000 people working in the organisation, is a big organisation, including more than 2,500 bus operators, so many field workers, as well as the whole range of office-based professions as well that are critical. But every single section of council shares that dedication, and I see it every day. And I know that my colleagues do, as they work with the teams out there across Brisbane in what has, as I said, been such an incredibly challenging year. Things that, I guess, changes that have normally taken a significant amount of time to come in have happened really quickly this year. And so whether it is the on-again, off-again response to the pandemic, where one minute we're all, you know, wanting to get back into the office, and next minute we're all told to stay at home for a period of time, that change is disruptive. And then obviously the response to the flood, where people's normal day-to-day jobs changed overnight as a result of this natural disaster. But to a person, I am incredibly proud of everyone in this organisation and so incredibly grateful. We know, based on the feedback that we get out there in the community, that the work that each of our officers does each day is valued by the community, is genuinely valued. And, you know, while our residents that we represent, of course, they raise issues, they raise concerns, they do make complaints, but having said that, it is always against a background of gratefulness for the work that is being done across Brisbane by the team right across council. And so I would simply say once again, thank you, Merry Christmas. We're all hoping that the next few weeks are uneventful and that while we know that council is ready for unexpected things to happen, that we hope that they do not happen, and we all share that desire for a restful and peaceful Christmas. And I certainly would issue those words to all the staff in council as well. Merry Christmas, thank you for your efforts, and may 2023 be another wonderful year and a safe year. Thank you.
Further debate. councillor Cassidy.
No, thanks very much, Chair. A rise to contribute on this motion of appreciation before us today. 2022 has been an incredibly testing year for the people of Brisbane, and in particular the workers here in Brisbane City Council, with ongoing COVID restrictions in January, the devastating floods in February, the rise of conflicts in Europe, it would be hard to imagine a tougher start to a year. But here we are, we made it through, it's time to relax, unwind with family and friends. The Labor team in council is beyond grateful for the 9,000-plus council employees and the effort they put in this year. So to each and every member of the council workforce, we say thank you. Thanks for helping us get through the devastation of the floods across the city. Thanks for never shying away for the challenge in repairing the damage, which will no doubt be a lengthy task and ongoing. Thank you for your tireless work on a day-to-day basis that sets this city apart from the rest. During the February rain event, we saw the tangible effects of ongoing contracting, outsourcing, and staff cuts on the ground. And there's no secret that Brisbane's amazing frontline workers need more support and need more colleagues. A huge shout-out to our bus drivers, who despite low patronage over the last couple of years are continuing to face rising numbers of assaults while they are at work. I've heard firsthand from drivers how rosters are being manipulated, giving drivers longer broken shifts and lowering their weekly take-home pay. This is not good enough, and they need more support while at work. This council still has a long way to go in terms of making workplaces safer and wages fairer, but the Labor team vows to always fight for you, our workers, beside you in this chamber and out at your workplaces as well. We'll keep up the battle for better working conditions, secure employment, and greater rights at work. As a Northside councillor, with supplies of course right around the city, I want to give a special mention to the mosquito control team, especially with another La Niña upon us. They are a small team of now 21, they were 17 when we first started ramping up our campaign for more resources for that team. There's now 21 there, and their task with covering thousands of hectares of difficult terrain to spray each and every week of the year to keep us safe. We won't stop in our calls in this chamber to get that team more support and the resources they need to do their job. A big thanks goes to all the other hard-working staff in every corner of this council, whether they work in the compliance team and transport planning and transport strategy, community halls, parks, asset services, and our libraries, and in community services out in the community more broadly. All of you play a significant role in the operation of our city. To the team here in City Hall, who make this place tick for us in the back end, I guess, of City Hall, not the front-facing part, to Helma, Lucy, Melissa, Lena, Billy, Billy Peers is here somewhere at the back, and Raymond, who's new to the team that we see during the daylight hours at the moment, to Billy, Aaron Craig, Hope, James, and the rest of the IT team, thank you for your endless support throughout the year. You've had a tough task in getting us all transitioned over in the last few months to the new operating systems we are on. To the committee clerks who are here today, and also the ones who are in our committee meetings each and every week, who prepare for these meetings and support the work of the council chamber. You do wonderful work, and I'm sure we've kept you on your toes once again this year. And thank you to the team in information services. Their efforts don't go unnoticed by my team in the number of file requests we do throughout the year. To Leonie Motum, thank you for being very approachable and supportive to councillors and their staff in the work that we do. Your work is deeply appreciated, and we couldn't operate as smoothly as we do out in our communities without you. To the teams in the ward offices in City Hall here, I couldn't do this job without that support, and I'm sure that is the same for my colleagues as well. Locally, it's been one of the hardest years in the seven years that I've been a councillor, with my staff particularly being on the frontline, the first port of call for the thousands of residents who are affected by the floods in February this year. And they continue to support people on, if not a daily basis, on a weekly basis still at the moment, people who are reeling from that disaster as well. So very, very special thank you for me personally to Jen and Quinn in the Deegan Ward Office. And in City Hall, we've of course been supported by staff to enable us to keep this administration to account, so a big thanks to Tom, Jess, Patrick, and Daniel in my office here. My message to council employees who are working right across the organisation is please do enjoy this break and return to work next year with the confidence that here in council and in this council chamber and through the organisation, you've got a Labor team of councillors who will always have your back.
Further speakers? councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Unlike councillor Cassidy, who always has to do a negative political spin on everything in the matter of appreciation, I'm going to stick to the appreciation of our council officers. I'd like to start by thanking Tom, who's PPI for the Northside, for the changes and working through them positively with us in the Marchant Ward Office. And of course, a big shout-out for Shannon. Shannon is only, she's acting up as PPI. I just want to make it known that she is probably one of the best council officers that I have met in recent weeks. Her dedication, she goes beyond what she needs to, and Shannon, I really do appreciate the work that you're doing for the North. The roads and drainage team, wow, this year has been incredible for you guys with the floods and the amount of record number of road resurfacing that we've had across our city, and also the record numbers of pothole repairs that we've done. Thank you so, so much. Appreciation would not be an appreciation without mentioning Andrew Ensby. Andrew, your creativity is second to none. The work that you're doing on Bradbury Park, I know you've heard this before, but the work that you've done there and delivering the best park in Brisbane, I would like to say thank you. We look forward to the opening, hopefully in February. I know it's supposed to be a little bit later, but I'm hoping we'll get it done earlier because the Kedron community and Marchant community at large are desperately waiting for this new park to be open. The library staff, Cherm Side and Grange, thank you so much for your dedication to our residents on the North. But a special thank you to the Grange library staff, who when I have my mobile offices, they corner a little bit of the balcony off for me, and they bring out water for my residents and sometimes bikis as well. So thank you very much for your hard work and what you do for the local area. The team that are working on the Kedron Brook, big shout-out to Emily. Emily, thank you so much for your correspondence and connection to our community through this very vital work. Thank you for coming out to the mobile offices and the public meetings and talking to our community. The work that you guys are doing is amazing, even with the kind of slowdown councillor Wines with our endangered species that we had to be very careful of, the work is coming along. As everybody knows, the Kedron Brook was absolutely devastated in the February flood. To our clerks, thank you very much for putting up with us every Tuesday. Billy, thank you for the Mentos updates, refills during the Tuesday afternoons. A big thank you to Hopewell. Hopewell, thank you so much for your patience with me when you're fixing my computer. You've been absolutely amazing. I would like to thank every single one of our council officers who do their best to make the Northside of Brisbane better than what it is today. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Strur, Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I often say in this chamber that the best gift we can give to council employees is to make sure these meetings don't run too long or too late. So I echo my best wishes to all council staff and the other councillors. Have a Merry Christmas, and thank you for all the amazing work you've done this year and that you'll do over the coming year. Thanks.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Abbot.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Our ayes today to also give my appreciation to the many wonderful staff we have here in council, and in particular my staff at the Doughboy Ward Office. I would truly be lost without them. Our 10,000-strong team here in City Council works so hard and quietly to keep our city running and looking beautiful. This year certainly has had its challenges, and the Lord Mayor covered many of those. But I just am truly grateful for what they did. They all stood up, they quickly slotted into different roles, they converted their trucks into flood recovery machines, we had our waterways team running around, checking every waterway, the bridges, you name it. All of our council staff worked literally around the clock to get us back up and running as soon as possible, and they all helped our residents however they could by carrying out their damaged goods or whatever it may have been. I'm really, really grateful. I also wanted to do a big shout-out to our Eastside PPI team. We've gone through a really big change this year. I lost Brendan Knoll and Chris from the Eastside, and I gained Claire, an amazing outcome manager. But despite this huge change, I can honestly say that the residents of Brisbane have not noticed the difference. Our city is still looking as beautiful as ever. So I want to thank the PPI team for everything that they do, the frontline staff, and they make our city come to life with the beautiful parks and all of the great work they do. Just to echo Fiona's comment, I've had the amazing privilege of working with Andrew this year. He did Paul Conti Park and Hemant, and boy, oh, boy, he does a great job. Next year, we've got the Murray Recreation Reserve, and I've worked with Helena for years on that, and I'm truly grateful. And I'm also grateful for the clerks and Billy and everything they do, and every single staff member right across council would be so lost without you. Your guidance and your listening and the time you give up for each and every one of us to help us do our jobs, it makes our life so much better and it makes our city run so much better. So thank you to all of our council employees.
Thank you. councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd like to echo, of course, what councillor Cassidy said in regards to the gratefulness that we've experienced of the 9,000 staff that make up Brisbane City Council's team. They've done an incredible job over the last 12 months, of course, especially during the February, March, and of course, right up until now, because it continues on, there's a lot of restoration work, there's a lot of repair work that has to be done, and it doesn't end. But my team out at the ward office, Pam McCready and Nada Hernandez, we couldn't, I couldn't do my job at all without a team behind you, I tell you. It's just incredible the amount of work they did. But they also wanted me to say thank you very much for the people that they interact with on a daily basis in some cases. Certainly Leonie Motum is one that Pam really interacts with quite a lot, just to make sure everything stays on track and that we don't claim for anything that we shouldn't be. So, but anyway, she's a really good asset for this council. Shirley Epps, of course, the grants, does the grants programmes, and again, does an immense job, you know, when you think of how many wards that she has to look after through the grants programmes, it's quite phenomenal the amount of work that she undertakes on behalf of this council as well. We have had a couple of outcome managers for the new PPI arrangements, and I just wanted to, first of all, acknowledge Tom McHugh, who we lost to the Northside sadly, but we gained Grant Murray, and he was new to council, but I'll tell you what, he's been on a steep learning curve, but he's done a terrific job, and I really appreciate those weekly updates as well that he sends out to all his councillors, I believe. The rest of his team, Claire Gowing, Peter Sitma, Chris Daly, who's been with in my area for some years now, Dwayne Harkness and Michael Saunders, and of course, I reckon one of the best arborists across Brisbane, Anastasia Brown. Transport and Planning, which is a big ticket item in my ward this financial year coming as well, Raj Chandra and Kiran, again, have been with, been in my ward or been looking after the ward for some years now, and has continued to do a terrific job. Nicholas Debrice, Stephanie Gao, and Melvin Bowe, and Charlie Johnson as well. The IT people, of course, they've been mentioned by a number of councillors here already, but we thank you very much for all the patience that you show, especially when I bugger something up and I can't get it fixed and I, you know, ring up, Billy, I've done it again, could you come out again? Yes, I'm sure he does. And then finally, of course, our community facilitation operations team, which is working diligently trying to help me sort something out at CJ Greenfield at the moment, Michael Moherran and Matt Trevor. So I'd just like to thank them all for the great work that they do, certainly on behalf of my ward and of course right across Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. It would be remiss of me not to start off by addressing the floods that we had in February 2022, and I particularly want to thank every officer that during those times actually donned a high-vis vest, got out there, rain, hail or shine, mud up to their armpits, and got stuck in. I really did spend a lot of time with the crews at Newmarket, and I know many of, or at least a few of our council officers that were there that afternoon left very late that afternoon to go home and deal with flooding in their own homes, as the Lord Mayor said. So I really want to extend my thanks and their sacrifice for the city and the residents of Brisbane. They did go above and beyond, over and over and over again. I do hope that they have a very safe and Merry Christmas. I want to thank the team that supported myself while I was acting Chair. Sitting up in the big chair during a budget time can be a little bit daunting, and I have to say, the team that supports councillor Marks is just simply outstanding, there really is no other words for it. They are absolutely brilliant, and I extend my thanks to them. Moving on to the rest of the city standards team, can I thank all the guys out in the parks that have been maintaining our parks? I know they've had a lot of trouble this year with wet ground and rising water, and they have gone above and beyond many times, over and over again, to make sure that our parks are looking really good for Christmas this year. The open space guys, I want to echo the same sentiment. Our parks and playgrounds are looking absolutely fantastic, our street gardens are looking brilliant, I just really, really give my appreciation for all their works. The asphalt and aggregates team, I don't think enough can be said about the asphalt and aggregates team. If council was a bunch of superheroes, those guys would be Superman. They have just gone above and beyond this year, competing with not only water coming from the sky, but also water coming from the ground, and they have continued to do an outstanding job throughout the year. So I really want to pass my thanks on to them. The maintenance crews and the flying gangs that respond to our every call, it's fantastic to have those guys out there looking after our back. And I know that for them to drop a job and then go off and do something as a matter of urgency can be a little frustrating, but those guys are absolutely brilliant, and I do want to thank them. Our road crews and TPO, again, another great year. Thank you for getting our roads up and running so quickly after the flood event and continuing to maintain them in the term while we do the major repairs. I really want to give a big shout-out, and I've spoken to councillor Murphy personally about this, the transport for Brisbane team that have been helping me with a particular matter, the guys deserve a commendation. There's nothing more I can say about that, they are absolutely brilliant. Community facilities teams, they've gone in, they've dealt with a lot of flooding that happened in our facilities, they've got it up to scratch and running again. Many of our community groups have written to the Lord Mayor, and in my ward, they've written to myself thanking council for the work that they've been doing to get their spaces up and running again. I want to thank them for looking after our assets while we've been going through the reconstruction phase. We do have more work to do, that's acknowledged, and we will be definitely getting on top of that. The VPP team, for those who have a village precinct project, the aim of every village precinct project is to build a city of neighbourhoods. The one that was delivered for West Ashgrove has done that outstandingly. The CPO guys that delivered it, the city standards guys that came in and did the work at night time, the guys that designed it, the guys that did the community consultation, absolutely bloody brilliant. I apologise, Chair, I withdraw it if you ask me to, but they were fantastic. Moving on to CPO, councillor Wines will well know that Gresham Street Bridge was flooded, and there was some significant damage done to that bridge during construction, and the guys got on to that pretty much straight away, got it back on track and delivered it in time. It was fantastic. I am running out of time, Chair, or am I? No, I've got 10 minutes, sorry, I'll keep going. Can I thank the governance team and the clerks? While I was acting Chair of Council, they do a great job in supporting not only the Deputy Chair of Council, but also the Chair of Council. And if you will permit me, Chair, I do want to thank them for the work that they do. So councillor Maddock, myself, and the Chair, it's not an easy job sitting in that chair, and there's a lot to absorb before any meeting, and that team are really, really good at helping us get our head around the things ahead of us. Finally, I am going to name this person. Finally, I would like to thank Deb Smith. Now, to put some context around Deb, Deb's been a ward advisor in the Gap Ward for 22 years. 22 years she's been on the front line. She has survived, not the wrong word, let's say tolerated, tolerated three mayors and two councillors in that time. And Deb has an immense amount of intellectual knowledge around the Gap Ward. We often talk about our own personal legacies in this place and what we would like to see behind, leave behind. My belief is that the amount of service that Deb has given to my ward, the legacy belongs to her. She's been the ward advisor for councillor Nap and myself. She continues to be a source of inspiration, a source of strength, and I really want to thank her for everything that she has done for the city over the past 22 years, and I hope that she... that she has done for the city over the past 22 years, and I hope that she enjoys her time with her family and her grandchildren, she will be very, very missed, and I wish her very well in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming?
Sorry. Yes, I'd like to pay credit to the staff that have done such great work, and assisted me a lot in being the councillor for Wyndham Manly. My personal staff, a 10-year staff at Kerry Hackett, worked for me for a long time, and she went to Sydney unfortunately, but it was a good job, I think she's managing Tanya Plibashek's electoral office in Sydney, and able to spend time with her husband all the time, rather than him working out of Sydney and her working out of Brisbane, so that was very good for Kerry. And she was replaced with Carly Ogborne, who's doing an excellent job, learning the job quickly, big shoes to fill though, and also my other staff at Jennifer Hogan, who's powering towards 10 years, working for me as well, and is doing an excellent job. The outcome manager for PPI, Claire Going, is doing a great job, and I think it's a very demanding position she's taken on, I think eventually she'll be driven mad, but I hope it doesn't happen. But CARs team leader, George Morris, has been very cooperative with our office. The TPO, the Transport Network Operations staff, Brian Nickel and Benny Wang, who look after Wyndham Manly, are extremely busy, yet they keep on top of the mountain of work they have to deal with. Transport for Brisbane, Jeff Beck, I've dealt with him quite a bit on the e-scooters issue, and he's been very forthcoming and supplied the details that we need for work on how the patronage is going and the like. City Planning and Development, so has Peter Harwood, has been of great assistance in dealing with difficult planning issues, and as has Waste and Recovery, Resource Recovery Services team leader, Caitlin Norrie. One person I really want to congratulate on his efforts and his cooperation was Simon Alexander from Creative Communities Manager. We had a situation where some groups had had festivals money for Halloween, they didn't want to do that anymore, so they were able to switch it over, with his assistance, they were able to switch over to a Harbour Lights project, and of course, he was a great supporter of the Fringe Festival as well, and also the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce, starting up their Halloween project, which went very well, 2,000 or 3,000 people at least, and that was funded by a couple of small grants that hadn't been used for a couple of years, but we were able to divert them across to Halloween, so that was great as well. Community Leasing Office, Nancy Betts, has been very much of assistance, and Rates Management Team Leaders, Ken Hall and Shane Knopki, have been great assistants. I've also got a few IT problems, you know, like I tend to push the wrong button every now and then, and Billy Aaron, James and Hope will have been very handy, and I like that system they have where they can take over your laptop and fix it up, you know, when you, just they tell you what button to push, and they fix it up for you, and they don't even have to come out and see you, whoever invented that, it's a great, great invention.
I guess we're the answer.
Oh, the, oh, there you go. councillor Johnson's playing. Yes, but anyhow, but overall, I'd like to thank the staff who, as has been stated, council staff are very committed to working for council, and doing a great job, and very proud of the fact that they are council employees, so I thank them for all that they've done for my office, thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Johnston?
Yeah, thanks very much. I rise to speak briefly on the notice of appreciation, and just mention a few of the good, the bad, and the ugly of 2022 at Brisbane City Council. Firstly, I want to start by thanking my staff in the Tennyson Ward Office, it's been an extraordinary year for my staff. With, you know, COVID, several staff, emergency appendectomies, floods, my dad passing, it's just been a hellish year, and through it all, they have been so hardworking, so dedicated, so thoughtful, and, you know, so very focused on helping others in their jobs, and I just want to say a big thank you to Claire, Camille, and Julia for all their hard work during the year. I also want to thank all the operational staff who are out there, and I may not mention all the teams, but I do just want to thank all the staff who work on the ground in parks, drains, trees, civil, and many other parts of those really functional, important areas of council. It's been a very difficult year for everybody, and there's been a lot of additional work to do, which is still ongoing, it is absolutely still ongoing, we're still waiting for drains and parks to be fixed up, but I thank them very much, I know it's been an extraordinary year for them as well. I also want to thank our libraries teams, the library staff do a wonderful job, they are great community facilities in our areas, and, you know, the importance of getting the libraries open, just to give people an idea, Fairfield, we had no power for a week, and the library managed to get a generator so they could open their door, so they could turn their lights on, and they had enough power to charge, and they said to me, Nicole, what can we do to help? And I said, people desperately need places to charge, and they said, right, we don't have a lot of power points, but can you organize adapters and people can come down? So I put the call out on Facebook, everybody dropped their adapters in, and the library became this little safe haven where you could get, put your phone in, get it charged up, because there's a lot of people in Fairfield in Yorongor without power for over a week, over a week. So it just shows that, yes, you could borrow a book, get a good story, but the libraries are such wonderful and welcoming places, and the staff do a great job. A big thank you to all the call centre staff, all the team at the Grants unit, particularly Shirley, she works very hard behind the scenes, and she's had a pretty rough couple of years as well, so thank you Shirley, I know my girls appreciate all your hard work. All the call centre staff, thank you very much, I know it's been a difficult year. To Leonie and her team, thank you for your support. To the bus drivers, I know it's been a very difficult year, it always very much disturbs me to read the ongoing assaults against bus drivers, and I've had the opportunity to talk with some of the bus representatives, and I know that there is more we can do in this space. We should absolutely be having security officers employed on the most problematic bus routes, and certainly there needs to be more done for their personal security and safety as well. There's 2,500 of them, and it's not acceptable that they're being assaulted on a daily basis. I want to thank the community facilities team as well, well done to Jordan, it's been a horrific year, and her team, and all the others who work behind the scenes in community facilities and leasing, I mean, I just, yeah, I'll leave that. And just, I know I'm probably leaving people out, but finally, all the clerks here who do a wonderful job looking after us on Tuesdays, it's so lovely to have a cup of tea and a friendly face to chat to, and they're so kind and thoughtful towards us, so thank you to all of those staff. The bad, the bad this year, I think, is really the fact that this council has, in the 14 years that I've been here, this council has fundamentally changed, it has completely changed from when I've started, and not in a good way. This council is now a corporation, it is not a community service organisation, and I just remind all the staff out there, because I know they listen, they often speak to me, they come and introduce themselves and talk to me, and I just say to them, please remember, I know that you're often in an operational area, and you've got 10 layers of bosses above you, but our objective here at council is to be a service organisation, not a management consultancy, not a corporation that is interested in profits and bottom lines, our job here is to deliver value and services for the residents of Brisbane, and this council, under the current leadership of the LMP Lord Mayor and the CEO Colin Jensen, are not doing that. This council has moved away, so far away, from its values and its ideals, and I think that is to the detriment of the service that we deliver to the residents of Brisbane. Now, the ugly, I know, and it often gets mentioned to me actually, I do sign the notice of appreciation that goes around, and council officers look at it, but I always exclude the CEO. I did use to exclude the former chief legal officer, but there's a new one now, and, you know, I don't, that's a different issue, but the CEO does not have my support, I think it's fair to say that. So I'm happy to support the motion of appreciation, but it does not extend as far as the CEO of council. The reasons, in my view, are pretty self-evident, he is a part of the political problem in this council that is led by the LNP, the fact that his salary is a secret, the fact that only he and the Lord Mayor knows what have happened, this is not a fundamental community service organisation that is accountable to the people of Brisbane. This year, the CEO has overseen the decimation of the operational wing of council, to the detriment of service delivery in this city. When we had a major natural disaster, there wasn't a parks officer to be found, no one knew who was in charge, and even now, the new councillor liaison officers, hello Rick Larkin, good job, I know you're working hard, you're getting there, it's all very good, enjoy your holiday, these guys don't know who to talk to, people aren't in jobs, whole sections of council were abolished, restructured, so many council staff lost their job, this year, or left, or chose to leave, and have gone to other organisations and councils all around Queensland. There are major, major changes to the senior leadership team of this council, was there any discussion with anybody in here about why these things were happening? No, all secretly done by the Lord Mayor, his executive, and Colin Jensen, and this might be the last time that I actually mention Colin Jensen, because he even wants to make sure his name doesn't appear in the council minutes. That's the kind of organisation that there is. I feel very strongly that the changes to the structural organisation of council this year have absolutely adversely impacted on the operational functionality of our organisation. Just finding someone to talk to about a park who's actually a parks officer is impossible, it's just not possible. I know there are arborists, but we didn't have an arborist in South Region for months and months, because there just was no arborist. I mean, this is not a way to run an organisation of 10,000 people. We know that council has outsourced huge amounts, we know that council has casualised the workforce, none of this is good for the morale of our staff. So I just say to the staff that when you hear me criticizing this administration, it is the leadership of this administration, the Lord Mayor, the LNP Establishment and Coordination Committee, who meet for 25 to 35 minutes a week, a week, and the CEO of council, and some of his senior leadership team. And I'll just say, finally, with respect to the floods, this council has not learnt its lessons. It is shocking to me that council thinks that everything's just going along fine. I finally, after several months of asking Peter Jeffrey for some responses to things that happened earlier in the year, got a response, and he indicated to me that an emergency gate was opened after I asked, it never was, it never was, and I know that because I turned up three days after I asked for it to be opened so I could get in and get to the flooded community, it never was opened, and this is the problem with council, this council thinks it's doing one thing, and it's not actually doing it. Finally, a big thank you to the IT team as well, sorry, boys, I haven't forgotten you, I know how much you helped me and my staff during the year, thank you very much. And just for those who were wondering about what Peter Cumming said, when I joined council, I could not believe that a council officer had to come out to your office to fix your computer, I couldn't believe it. In the Commonwealth at Parliament House, they could remote in, that was back in the 90s and early 2000s, and in the private sector, so my office offered to trial it, it worked successfully, and now everyone has it, and I'm very pleased that we were able to assist with IT rolling that programme out.
Further speakers? councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I join the motion of appreciation today. Mr. Chair, for me personally, I just want to thank my staff at Morningside Ward, Troy, Courtney and Phoebe, thank you, we are a very close-knit team, there is a lot of R&B music that is played every day in our office, and we just get on and get the job done. I value you and your incredible skills and talents, as well as your artistic abilities, thank you for all you do. On behalf of councillor Griffiths out in Maruka, I also want to thank his staff, Tracy, Sue, Lisa and Julia, Maruka Ward was one of the hardest hits during the floods, and I know that councillor Griffiths' staff were just outstanding in all that they did during that period of time, and I know that it took an enormous, enormous toll on councillor Griffiths as well as his staff, so thank you to them as well. I want to thank all of our council staff, but particularly those in the East Region during the floods in February, I know that many of those staff worked tirelessly, around the clock, at great sacrifice to themselves personally, but also to their family and friends who were flooding at the time as well, so thank you to those staff. Finally, Chair, I want to say something to those employees, those council employees who are not happy with this LNP administration, and who are not happy with the way the city is being run by the mayor, and also by the CEO Colin Jensen. Our Labor team has been listening to you, to those staff who might hear about this later, the ones who pull us aside in the corridors, who speak with us in the community when we're out at the shops, who send us notes in the mail, who leave notes under our doors at our ward offices, we know there are issues with this council, we thank you for contacting us and letting us know about those issues, we want to hear from you, and we want to hear from you particularly before the next election in March 2024. We know that those issues must be resolved, but in our view, the only way to resolve those issues is with a new council in this place. So, thank you for all you do, I know it's very hard at times to continue, but we appreciate all that you do, and we are listening to you, so have a very merry Christmas and an enjoyable break, thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Pong?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I rise to join with all the councillors in here in expressing our genuine appreciation to the council officers, not in here to making a political statement before Christmas and the festive season. So look, I would like to take this opportunity to genuinely thank the officers for the hard work they've done in making Brisbane of tomorrow even better than Brisbane is of today. So it was an easy year, as the lawman has mentioned, as the relentless pressure of the COVID-19 pandemic finally began to lift at the start of the year, Brisbane experienced an extreme flood, thus so over half of our city inundated. The flood left our city with a challenging rebuild and recovery period ahead. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to say that the residents of Brisbane rose to the challenge with the leadership of the Trinna Council and our hardworking council officers, who were able to return people's life back to normal as quickly as possible. On behalf of the Southside councillors, I would like to express our most sincere appreciation to the hardworking officers who have helped us deliver services and projects to our residents under massive financial and human resources pressure. Whilst all council officers have done a tremendous job throughout the year, I would like to personally acknowledge some of the officers who I had the privilege to work closely with, and they are, start with, not in particular order, but everyone are the ones I appreciate, Grant Murray, my outcome manager, Claire Going, regional manager, asset services south, David Bellasteros, Blake Lambon, Anastasia Brown from agriculture, Dan Hartness, and Barry Childs from parks, Peter Sipma, Mark Remus, Michael Thompson, and Martin McNamara from civil engineering, Lisa Bates, Admin Services, South Region Office, Michael Moheren from Community Facilities, and Nick Debris, Kiran Shritharan, sorry, sometimes I have challenges to reading these multicultural names. Yeah, Rajiv Chhatta, and also Melvin Bowe, Nick Hurston, Oliver Cooper from TPO, and also Simon Butterworth, Glenn Reamer, Kate Maslin, Takua Ricky, Hakka Oro, and also Lyle Hearn, Wendy Barclay from CARs, they are all the officers who has done an outstanding job in my area, and I thank them genuinely for assisting us, doing our job, and making sure that the residents are well looked after. So I'd also like to thank all the ward office staff for their tireless work in servicing our residents, as they are the front, they are the face of councillors in many cases when the resident came to us, and I don't think councillors can perform better without them, you know, so I'd like to take this opportunity- So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the ward office staff because they are doing a great job for us. And I also like to thank the council clerks and IT staff for sticking with us through the council meetings, no matter how late or how rowdy it is. And I agree with councillor Three Rangarthen. We all hope, you know, the meeting goes smoothly, but sometimes there are always councillors who try to make sure you get extra works. They probably be a bit overpaid in here, so. Yeah, but but also can I just close by saying thank you to you, to you all again. I think the people of Brisbane appreciate your services and I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a safe Christmas, don't forget to sign up to councils with alert. And yeah, and of course, we look forward to a great 2023 ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers. No further speakers. Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you to all councillors who have contributed to this motion of special appreciation. I would simply say in closing that I've given the invitation for all councillors to sign a message to the staff based on this motion as we do each year. It's up the front of the chamber, so as you sign the book, also please sign that motion of special appreciation and that, as it always is, will be displayed in the foyer of Brisbane Square. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any to the contrary, please say no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,698th meeting, held on Tuesday, the 29th of November 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Mackay that the minutes of the 4,698th meeting of council held on Tuesday, 29 November 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this morning you visited the federal government's quarantine facility in Pinkham Bar. With Brisbane's housing crisis in full effect, can you please update the chamber on how repurposing this facility will help the ongoing housing crisis?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thanks you, councillor Atwood, for the question. Yes, indeed, I did get the opportunity. Thank you to the federal government for throwing open the doors of the new quarantine facility to have a look. Now, obviously, this is something that I've been raising to put on the table since July this year. And so as we approach Christmas, I think I'm not the only one that's a bit frustrated that there doesn't seem to be any progress on what is a taxpayer-funded, taxpayer-owned facility that could have a better use than sitting there vacant, as it is now. And so to see the facility with my own eyes, thanks to the federal government and the department who hosted us and also the construction contractor who is just finishing up on site, was a great opportunity to see this facility. This is a facility that has been purpose-built with 500 beds. And so this is a facility that, with with the exception of a very few minor things, is complete. There's just a few more minor finishing touches, but it is 99% complete. I was there this morning with councillor Howard and also representatives from some of our housing organisations and providers, including Micro Projects, K Shelter and Mangrove Housing, which also support the Forgotten Women Project. Now, this facility, it's actually, there's been a lot of thought and effort and investment put into building what is a very high standard of facility. The facility has a huge commercial kitchen and that kitchen is obviously suitable to produce meals for more than 500 people at a time. It has a medical centre and health centre, which has been designed in consultation with Queensland Health. It has a security centre, which has been designed in consultation with the Queensland Police Service, including the place being fully wired with CCTV cameras, security features and jurassic alarms. So I know that one of the issues that people raised was, you know, if this is used for, say, crisis accommodation, is it is it safe? It is a location that has a huge logistics warehouse, which would supply the day-to-day needs of people living in the facility. So large semi-trailers pulling up to the logistics warehouse, anything from food to basic supplies that are needed stored in the logistics warehouse. The the site has a range of administration buildings as well. So there's plenty of room to do a lot of things out there, massive amounts of car parking as well, there's 250 car parking spaces available on site. The rooms are a mixture of single rooms, double rooms and family rooms. So there's a range of different sizes. The family rooms can accommodate up to four people. The rooms have also been designed with a certain number of rooms that are accessible for people with a disability and they've been designed especially for that. The rooms are fully air-conditioned and they are fully soundproofed as well, double glazing, extra insulation. There's been a lot of investment and effort put into the facility. So I guess my observations when I was out there is that there must be a better use for this facility than for $400 million of taxpayer money going into a facility that is not being used right now and there's no use designated. There are two, in my mind, obvious uses for this facility. Number one, I think it would make an ideal evacuation centre in the case of a natural disaster such as a flood or a bushfire or a cyclone. That could accommodate up to 500 people in that sort of situation and there could be wraparound services provided at the facility. Now, we can make evacuation centres work in a place like the Kedron Wavell Services Club. This place is the rolled gold version of that and has all of those facilities considered and catered for. So that's one obvious use. The second obvious use is the potential for it to be used as a first point of call for people that are at risk of homelessness or facing that initial period of homelessness. So people that at the moment might be living in cars or in tents, this is an option for them. Now, there would have to be modifications made to the facility. There's several things that immediately came to mind that that would need to be adjusted. But most importantly, it would require, as I said, that wraparound service. There's plenty of administration offices there. There's plenty of security opportunities. There's plenty of opportunities to make this part of the solution for our housing crisis.
Your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Labor councillors will be actively supporting the Yes campaign on the upcoming referendum and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Voice to Parliament. Will your LNP administration do the same?
Lord Mayor.
Unfortunately, Mr Chair, we've seen what has just happened last week up in the state parliament coming down here because Labor councillors lack imagination. Now, what I can say is this, this council in a united way has already supported the voice. Now, there was a motion that came through this chamber and the motion was approved and supported by all councillors and that motion is as follows. Following the second anniversary of the Uluru Statement from the Heart and in the spirit of reconciliation, that this council commits to walking with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in a movement for a better future. We support the consideration of a constitutionally enshrined First Nations voice and Macarata Commission to supervise the process of an agreement-making and truth-telling. And that we acknowledge, now obviously this at the time was relevant, acknowledge the recent appointment of Australia's first Indigenous Minister for Indigenous Affairs, Ken Wyatt, and agrees with the minister's approach to the proposal recommended in the Uluru Statement of the Heart. And finally, that we hear the continued call for a better future built on the foundations of respect and fairness. Now, I can tell you, our approach in that motion has not changed. That is, our approach, we did that in a united way with the support of all councillors and we expect that approach to continue, to be a united approach. But one thing we do do is we reject absolutely any attempts to divide the community or play politics with this issue. So we'll be very clear on that. This should be something that we can all support together, as we did in this motion, and I would certainly reject any attempts to try and create a political or divisive issue out of what should be something that brings people together rather than divides them.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, no, just it was a very simple question. Will will the administration actively support the Yes campaign? The Lord Mayor is answering the question. Sorry, sorry, no, I won't accept it. We've just already voted yes, that's not what my question was. There will be a referendum. My question, Chair, was whether the administration would actively support.
You're now debating the point of order.
Well, he should just say yes. He should just say yes.
Lord Mayor, is there anything further to add?
Do what David Christopherley wouldn't, just say yes.
Further questions? Further questions? Any further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Sorry, with all the shouting across the the chamber, I couldn't hear. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, this year Brisbane's housing crisis peaked at record highs. While the Shrima Council got on with approving new homes and offering common sense solutions, what were Labor and the Greens doing?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you. Thank you to councillor Hammond for the question. You only have to look back over the year to see what the Labor and Greens councillors have been doing. And, Mr Chair, it is essentially nothing. They sit there, nitpick and criticise our actions without any understanding of the often complex ministerial planning requirements and state-imposed processes that impact planning timelines and outcomes. They are critical when developments are approved that provide the right mix of housing in the right locations. I do not need to remind the chamber of the Greens councillor's comments on developments within his ward. From West End to South Brisbane and Kangaroo Point to the Gabba, it would be hard to find a development he has supported. The Greens councillor regularly rejects or stymies attempts to boost housing supply and density in his ward. And his solution to address housing is to encourage often dangerous and illegal activities. Despite this, we're getting on with the job. We are planning for and approving more homes for Brisbane residents. This year to date, the Development Services team has completed 4,139 applications. This is in addition to the 587 planned ceiling applications, 692 pre-lodgement meetings, 1,358 operational work applications and 3,430 siting variations. In November alone, this has resulted in the approval of approximately 488 additional dwellings. During last week's council meeting, there was another reminder of the opposition's lack of support. This administration brought through three planning scheme of changes, including the local government infrastructure plan and the long-term infrastructure plan. Council has a mandatory requirement by the state to review these two documents every five years. And in this review, we have increased capital expenditure by $1.2 billion to $3.6 billion on trunk infrastructure for the period from 2021 to 2036. When reviewing these, it's clear that councillor Sri Ranganathan has been a major beneficiary of this additional expenditure to the tune of $447 million in the LGIP. I would also note last week that the opposition couldn't take a position on the LGIP and decided to abstain rather than vote yes or no. But in fact, they didn't take the opportunity to vote against the Sandgate District neighbourhood plan. Mr Chair, while this was yet again pretty disappointing, it was not a surprise, their track record on neighbourhood plans is disheartening to say the least. These neighbourhood plans are investigated and developed over several years with extensive community consultation undertaken. They help to facilitate economic growth, housing, protect and retain character housing, set out levels of assessment for new development, plan for new infrastructure networks and provide for local areas and open space. Following the adoption of the two neighbourhood plans this year, the opposition now have voted against 15 of 18 plans since 2016. Across these 18 plans, there is the potential to provide an additional 30,000 dwellings. And they say we are doing little to address the housing crisis. Well, Mr Chair, the numbers speak for themselves. And councillor Cassidy has repeatedly asked for a housing strategy. He has asked without recognising the challenges this city has faced these past few years. Without recognising that the preparation of any planning document, it needs to be considered, measured and carefully thought out. Perhaps, perhaps the Lord Mayor would.
Councillor Cassidy, please. Councillor Allen, please don't be distracted.
Councillor Cassidy would love us to produce another glossy brochure and bring it to this chamber and we're going and we're going to do that and you know what he'll do.
Councillor Murphy, please.
He'll vote against it. He will complain about the money we spent on the housing strategy and then he'll vote against it. That's exactly what will happen. Mr Chair, in the remaining time I have left, on behalf of myself and the councillors in this chamber, I would like to thank the officers from City Planning and Economic Development and Development Services for their efforts this year. Led by John Cowie and Peter Harwood, their efforts have been tireless and they have delivered despite the challenges they have faced. Their output has been of an extremely high quality, so thank you very much. I want to also acknowledge the contribution made by their colleagues across the various other portfolios from transport, infrastructure, environment and parks, to name a few. Mr Chair, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal portfolio is one where we are planning for development and the infrastructure to support growth and turn this city into a city of great neighbourhoods.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, what is the progress of Brisbane City Council's housing and homelessness strategies that you promised but failed to deliver for years?
Lord Mayor.
Well, we have several important housing strategies. One of them is the city plan and it continues to get updated week after week. And what happens? Labor councillors, opposition councillors continue to vote no. They continue to vote against progress, against the creation of new homes, against the the development of new areas where people can live in our city. But we also have this document. It's called the Brisbane Future Blueprint, which is also part of our housing strategy. And it is an award-winning, an award-winning programme that involved record community consultation and in fact, won international engagement awards for engaging the community on the challenging issue of development and growth. And so we have a whole range of different strategies. We're not, we're not waiting in terms of our approach. We're getting on with the job and the things that need to be done. But by all means, there are some things that are a moving feast that we need to consider. The first is that there is a housing summit that just recently, only in recent days, has produced a report. And we will be working with the state government to make sure that we proactively and cooperatively implement positive changes that can deliver more housing. And we'll do so against the background of Labor councillors and Greens councillors voting against development at every opportunity, but we will do it because it's the right thing to do because people in Brisbane need homes. But the other thing, though, that is a moving feast, is that we do not have updated South East Queensland regional plan targets. Now, the targets in the South East Queensland regional plan predate COVID, they predate the current housing crisis, they predate the massive influx of people that we have seen from other states and now internationally into our city and the surrounding region. And so one of the outcomes of the housing summit and one of the commitments that the state government has made is that next year they will update the South East Queensland regional plan. So we'll continue doing the work that we are already doing when it comes to progressing changes to the city plan, progressing our suburban renewal initiative, fighting for common sense outcomes like the the use of the quarantine facility at the Brisbane Airport.
Lord Mayor, point of order.
We've heard lots of excuses from the Lord Mayor and his answer so far, but nothing on the topic of the question, which was, what is he doing to progress the housing strategy he promised in 2019 and the homelessness strategy he voted for in May this year? What is he doing?
Councillor Cassidy, you're now debating the point of order. The Lord Mayor is answering the question.
So there's a little bit of of history here that Labor councillors try and conveniently forget. And that is, when we released our Future Blueprint, which was based on the wishes of the community and widespread consultation. the community and widespread consultation, we decided that it wasn't appropriate to put townhouses in low-density areas, right? There are plenty of appropriate places for townhouses. We simply said, based on the feedback of the community, low-density wasn't one of those appropriate places. And when we submitted that change to the state government, they kicked up an almighty stink about it. Because they seem to have no problem with the destruction of low-density areas. They had no problem with it. And so while they begrudgingly accepted...
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
The question was very clear. What progress has the Lord Mayor made on his promised housing strategy from 2019 and the homelessness strategy he voted for in May this year? We're hearing lots of excuses, but no answers.
The Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question. Lord Mayor.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. We make progress every single week on our plans to support more housing supply. And we saw the Sandgate Town neighbourhood plan come through. They voted against it. This week...
Councillor Cassidy.
This week, we have another neighbourhood plan coming through. I wonder what they will do. I wonder what they will do. The people that claim they care about housing voted against 15 out of 18 neighbourhood plans. 15 out of 18 neighbourhood plans. And today, I predict they're going to vote against another one. 16 out of 19 neighbourhood plans. And they talk about concern for housing. They have no concern for housing. They have no concern whatsoever, because if they did, they would support an increase in the supply of housing through the neighbourhood plan, through city plan and through other strategy.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
The question was about the homelessness strategy that the Lord Mayor voted for in May this year and the housing strategy that the Lord Mayor promised to deliver in 2019. Could you bring him back to the relevance of the question?
The Lord Mayor is being relevant to the question.
He absolutely is not.
Have you finished? Oh, your time, your time. Lord Mayor, your time has now expired. Councillor Adamant.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrima Council recently completed additional flood warning signs throughout the city, including in the Pullenvale Ward. Can you please update the chamber on how the Shrima Council is improving signage to keep residents safe in times of flood?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And can I in particular thank councillor Adamant for his keen and ongoing interest in this work? He is the councillor for the geographically largest council ward in the city, with also some of the most, we'll call it the Wild West of the city, the country area. Just ask them, I see they... But on topic, councillor Adamant was the beneficiary of five of the new items. And that is because his area in standards for the city is remote and there is a lot of hills, mountains and waterways in his in his community. And it's important that we make all of the city safe. So what are the automated flood warning signs? We have discussed them in the past, but I'll take a moment to remind councillors, this is a replacement programme where we take the former road closed signs that used to have the padlock and the drop-down sign and replace them with fully automated, remotely-controlled flood warning signs that close roads. Now, it's an important thing to remember, this is a road closure. These signs stay out of the waterway. Councillor Strunk and I had a discussion about where the power source for these should be. There was some discussion that they should be underground and I suspected, and I suggested, I think that they should be above the potential waterline. And that's where they will be. They are solar-powered, they are remotely-controlled. One of the issues we had with road closures during the flood event was not only did a person have to get to the sign, sometimes the roads to the sign themselves were blocked and you really should actually drop them at the same time. So if there's, imagine a singular piece of road, the signs closing, it should actually drop it roughly the same time and either in closing it completely. So to have that level of coordination, the easiest way to do it is remotely. And we have empowered some of our officers through the BMTMC and the TPO branch to be able to close these roads remotely. There is a question, many people ask, is there a camera that verifies whether there is water over the road? Yes, we can view where the water would go over the road so that that can be verified remotely, so that it's not a error potentially by the machinery, by the electrics, by the assessing equipment. We can make a visual assessment as to whether there's water across the road. At this time, that will be kept in-house, but as time progresses, that could potentially be made available publicly. But at the moment, we're just going to use it to make sure that our machinery is working and that the road closures are complete, are correct. Now, there are 12 signs that were in place. And the commitment that was made was that they would be completed by December. So bear with me as I read when and where and when these were in place. Lansing Street, Pullenvale, 30 November. Bow Hill Road, Durack, 30 October. Paradise Road, Willowong, 21 November. Collo Bridge, Collo, 30 November. Rafton Ground Road, Brookfield, 21 November. Victoria Street Windsor, 30 November. Sherwood Road, Rockleigh, 30 November. Fermosa Road, Belmont, 14 November. Grandview Road, Pullenvale, 30 November. Gap Creek Road, Kenmore Hills, 14 November. Brackenridge Road, Brackenridge, 14 November. Winham Road, Tingalpa, 14 November. They're the 12 new ones. That goes on top of the three that were funded federally. That's Gap Creek Road, Kenmore Hills, 14 November. Bowman Parade, Baden, 14 November. Lucy Street Station Road, Maruka, 14 November. Now, the reason that I have come here today to talk about this is not only because we completed those 15 in the manner, in the time that we said, in the manner that we said, I'd also like to take a very quick moment to thank Tanya and in particular Deb Sketchley and her team. We did put pressure on Deb to hit this timeline and she hit it, as I always knew she would. So thank you very much to her and her team and the TPO team. But because they've done such a good job, we have now an opportunity to advise the council that another 12 will be built this financial year. So we'll, and those 12 are Illawina Street, Druvale, Manly Road, Tingalpa, Zilmia Road, Zilmia, Pratton Street, Corinda, Clivedon Avenue, Corinda, Oxley Road, Oxley Station Road, Oxley, Wyampa Road, Bald Hills, Upper Kedron Road, excuse me, Upper Brookfield Road, Upper Brookfield, Lake Manchester Road, Lake Manchester, Witten Road, Indrapilly, Moss Vale Street, Ashgrove and Beanley Road at Runcorn. These 12 additional locations will be completed in the coming financial year by 1 July 23.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, will you guarantee that every item in the suburban works programme, delivered as part of your budget this year, which covers everything from safer paths, the schools, roadworks, stormwater infrastructure protected against flooding and so much more, will be completed as promised?
Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy, Mr. Chair, obviously wasn't listening during the budget debate and discussion and presentations earlier this year because the change to the way the schedules work and the structure of the budget was done very deliberately because of the rapidly changing situation that we faced in recent years, whether it's the pandemic, whether it's the flood, whether it's a global inflation crisis. All of these things, for anyone that has any common sense, would indicate that best laid plans are impacted by pandemics, natural disasters and global economic conditions. And so the budget is structured in such a way that gives us the flexibility to be nimble and to change priorities as different challenges come up. That was explained very clearly at the time of the budget. And this has been something that's been requested also by the officers that help manage these budget programmes for us. Because I'll give you an example of what changes. We had certain parking fees that were planned and certain enforcement activities that were scheduled. And just when the pandemic came up, we cancelled all of it. We turned off the parking meters, we waived the parking fees, we stopped the enforcement activity. We did that as a community response to a changing situation. Now, ultimately, we had to retrospectively get the approval for those things through the council chamber. So that's what had to happen under the old system. And that is not an ideal situation. And so the way that we have restructured the budget is to give us greater flexibility to respond quickly as events change. And that's also consistent with the way the state government manages their budget. The state government doesn't list a long schedule of projects each year and says, this is what's part of our approved budget. They simply approve a large pool of money in different sections, in different departments. And as priorities change and challenges arise, they have the flexibility to make changes and adjustments up in George Street. And it is a tried and tested method that other levels of government use. And because of our size and scale and the fact that we are dealing with these changing situations and challenges, it was appropriate that we give ourselves the opportunity to be more nimble and respond appropriately as situations change. So I would simply say, can I guarantee everything will go to plan? I don't think anyone could guarantee that. I can guarantee everything will go to plan except for natural disasters, except for pandemics, except for global inflation crises, except for skills shortages. Other than that, everything will go to plan in the coming 12 months. But the reality is, we're very clear about why these changes were made. They were made for good community reasons, so that we can be nimble, so that we can respond, so that we can do the right thing by the community. And that's exactly what we've been doing.
Further questions? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, this coming school holidays, there is plenty to see and do around our city. Could you please update the chamber on all the options available for Brisbane's schoolgoers and parents alike this summer?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question. And there really is so much more to see and do every day in Brisbane. And that's thanks in no small part to the Shrima Council and our continued investment in creating more to see and do. And let me tell you, there is so much more to see and do this Christmas. From kayak adventures to cartooning classes, we're putting busting boredom to the top of the to-do list these school holidays. We've got more than 300 activities in the calendar for all ages, abilities and interests, from the adventurous to the sporty to the theatre lovers. We've got soccer coaching in Everton Park, adventure games in Callumvale, ab sailing in Kangaroo Point and so much more. Boredom will be banished these holidays with the kids able to be kept entertained without breaking the bank. Most activities will be free or very low cost. All of these free and low-cost programmes are something we are very proud to deliver. With the costs of living on the rise, offering free and low-cost activities like this removes barriers across our community and allows everyone to enjoy the fun. These holidays, there are activities planned across 70 suburbs, from fishing classes in Karana Downs to Zumba Kids in Sandgate. Australia's BMX Olympium, Natalia Dean, will be putting on an exclusive BMX class for free to bring up the next generation of Brisbane BMX riders on December 17. The adventure games at Carandale Recreation Reserve will keep the kids active and healthy these holidays with ball games, tug-of-war, fun relay races, parachute games, mad hoppers and many more fun activities. In Milton, its Rocket Science Event at Fruit Park will have kids reaching for the stars as they learn to build and launch water rockets high into the sky. We've got free laser tag in Winham and Willing Gaba. You can learn how to create your very own stop animation movie in Brackenridge. Or learn some new tips and tricks with freestyle scooter coaching in Fairfield, Caraby, Ashgrove and Deegan. Or if skateboarding is more your thing, we've got learn-to-skateboard workshops in Cinnamon Park, Fitzgibbon, Winham West, Murray Re, Paddington and Bulimba. You can learn how to create your very own circus in Oxley. Make your very own magic wand in New Farm Park or learn how to windsurf at Arthur Davis Park. Or make your move with giant games at George Clayton Park in Manly with giant chess and checkerboards, giant Lego or supermassive Connect Four and Jenga games for everyone to enjoy a supersized dose of board game fun. Or come out to Loater Camping Reserve and train as Brisbane's new Ninja Warrior. And if that's not enough action for you, you can live out reality TV dreams with Brisbane's very own Survivor challenges in Manly and Camp Hill and it won't cost you a thing. Or if you're looking for something a little more relaxed, you can roll up your sleeves and learn how to master a pottery wheel in Mount Grabat. The Lord Mayor's children's programme also makes a return these school holidays with two free performances of Shake and Stir Theatre Company's nationally acclaimed adaption of Roald Dahl's Revolting Rhymes on January 19. And the Shrima Council's investment in Brisbane suburbs provide even more free holiday fun with our parks and playgrounds across the city also offering a whole lot of fun outside of the planned programme. With more than 2,180 parks across the city, there's thousands of opportunities to get out and about these holidays. We have 22 pools to help you and your kids escape the heat this summer, including our newly reopened Ginderley and Newmarket Pools. And don't forget about our 33 libraries that have a jam-packed schedule of activities over the holidays to make learning fun. So this weekend, we're kicking off our 2022-23 Summer Reading Programme to get the school holidays off to a racing start with our first ever all-ages reading programme with activities for everyone, young, old and all ages in between, including cartoon and writing workshops, interactive live performances and science activities. So don't wait around to start enjoying in the fun. It's free to participate, sign up visiting your local library, visit every local library that you can find and collect their programme booklet. Borrow books and engage with activities in the library space. The programme offers a great range of free summer holiday events and activities for kids, including cartoon and writing workshops, interactive live performances and science activities. And on that note, our libraries will also...
Councillor Howard, your time has expired.
There we go.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, what was the date, time and text of the first early warning alert sent out by Brisbane City Council, warning residents that Oxley Creek was flooding? Not raining, but flooding.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, with the millions of text messages that went out in the lead-up to the flood, I can't answer that one off the top of my head, but certainly happy to have a look at what was sent out and let councillor Johnston know. But what I also must do is encourage councillor Johnston to be active in encouraging her residents to sign up to the severe weather alert system, because that is an instantaneous alert system that warns people as there are BOM advices going out.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
My actions aren't the subject of the question here, Mr. Chair. My question was, what is the date, time and text of the first early warning alert sent out by Brisbane City Council, warning residents that Oxley Creek was flooding? I am perfectly aware of what I'm doing, but my issue is the Lord Mayor has said that this system is working.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. You're now debating the point of order. The Lord Mayor is 30 seconds into the answer. Lord Mayor.
He can't debate the answer.
Lord Mayor.
He's got to answer it.
Look, councillor Johnston, please. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, and I have given councillor Johnston the assurance that I'll have a look at her question. But the reality is, with the millions of different text messages that were sent out during the flood, of course, I can't remember specifically the date and time that one particular location of the city was sent out. This is an automated system. It goes out based on BOM advice, but also based on the water level monitoring that happens in creeks as well. And I mentioned last week that we all got, well, we got one just recently saying that water was rising in Rocky Holes Creek, where the automatic water detectors had detected water was rising and that sent out then an automatic alert. So I will have to see, go back through the records and have a look in response to councillor Johnston's question. This is a question that councillor Johnston could have asked at the recent LDCC coordination exercise that councillors were invited to come along and participate in.
Again, point of order, Mr. Chair.
But I don't believe she took that opportunity out.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston. I have called you.
Again, the question is not about my actions. The question is, what was the date, time and text of the first early warning alert sent out? If the Lord Mayor has said now twice he can't answer it and he'll get back to me, then anything else is irrelevant, Mr. Chair. And I would ask you to let somebody else have a question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Unless he wants to...
Thank you, councillor Johnston. You're now debating the point of order.
Get the answer.
The Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question. Is there anything more you'd like to add? Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the...
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, in 2022, the Shrinna Council has built new parks, upgraded existing ones and kept our city clean, green and sustainable. Could you please update the chamber on some of the achievements in your portfolio this year?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Mackay for the question. 2022 was a very big year for the Environment, Parks and Sustainability portfolio, not least because it began with the widest-reaching flood event that Brisbane has ever seen. Across our network of 2,187 parks, 863 were inundated and 293 playgrounds were impacted. But thanks to the tireless work of council officers, we bounced back quickly and we're building back better, with all but one of the 293 impacted parks now reopened for the community to enjoy. To help raise flood awareness in our community, we have released our new flood information online that includes the flood awareness maps and floodwise property reports, as well as improved education and awareness material to help ensure Brisbane residents are prepared for potential future flooding before the next summer storms hit. This year, we've continued to focus on practical strategies to keep Brisbane clean, green and sustainable, as we move towards hosting the world's first ever climate positive Olympics in just under 10 years' time. We adopted a formal emissions reduction target of a minimum of 30% and a commitment to net zero by 2050, and we've already made real progress. In the last year alone, our carbon footprint has reduced by as much as 7% on the 2016/17 levels. And the Shrinna Council has now received international recognition for our environmental leadership, with the Lord Mayor attending COP27 last month. You don't get invited to speak at COP27 if you're not doing something right. Brisbane has now become the first Australian city, and just one of six in the world, to be inducted into the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals Programme as a silver-certified city. We know that Brisbane is growing and changing, and we're working to make sure that growth is sustainable and green-focused. In 2022, we have planted more than 7,200 street trees and park trees, and that's in addition to the 51,000 stems of koala fodder we've planted across our reserves. And of course, on transforming our network of parks and reserves is continuing, including adding an additional six parks to the network. In September, we released the Victoria Park Baramban Draft Master Plan. Victoria Park is Brisbane's biggest new park in 50 years, and we are transforming it into an iconic parkland with something for everyone. To put it into perspective, Mr. Chair, Victoria Park is 64 hectares of green space. It's about the same size in total as Roma Street Parklands, South Bank Parklands and the city Botanic Parklands combined. And it's already becoming a destination for residents and visitors alike, with much more to see and do. The park also included hosting the Greenheart Fair, where earlier this year, there were 15,000 people who came along to learn more about Brisbane's unique natural environment to become more sustainable and, of course, to collect their free native plant. Mr. Chair, I'm incredibly proud of the news team who brought home the gold in integrated stormwater design for their work on Norman Park Creek at Hanlon Park at the Stormwater Queensland Awards. It was widely acknowledged that Hanlon Park is a special destination park and waterway in the city and an exemplar of integrated design. This is great feedback, and it demonstrates once again Brisbane City Council being a leader in this space. Congratulations also to the team in News Branch, who were announced as the overall winner in this year's Lord Mayor's Awards for Excellence for our world-first koala crossing in Boundary Road. This wildlife movement solution project, which spans the road, ensures safe koala movement and other wildlife by reducing injuries and fatalities between those habitat areas. Mr. Chair, work is well underway at Nudgee Rec Reserve, which I know councillor Adam Allen has been a great advocate for, capping the former landfill site and installation of new light poles expected to be completed by Christmas. And that's without mentioning Bradbury Park, Mr. Chair, where we broke ground on the state-of-the-art custom-designed playscape unlike any you have seen in Brisbane, and we hope to see that completed somewhere in the first quarter of next year. The work is progressing well, and we know that the children are really going to be able to enjoy an environment where they can explore never-ending loops of towers, bridges and tunnels across this playscape, which is the size of a small city. Already, the award-winning news...
Councillor Davis, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 28th of November be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 28th, November 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
I just ask that items C, D and E are taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes.
Could you repeat that, please?
C, D and E.
C, D and E?
Yep.
Thank you.
And F?
Voting and voting and...
Debate and voting, yep. And F, just for voting purposes, please.
C, D and E for debate and voting, and F for voting seriatum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I always do, I just want to let you know about the lighting up of our assets in this final week of council for 2022. We have, from Monday through to Thursday, the assets lit up in purple to support the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Annual Christmas Appeal. We appreciate the support of the community, the support of donors and investors into the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust, and their support so far already this Christmas has allowed grants of $99,000 to be made to 52 different organisations and charities, also for more than 4,000 toys to be given to local charities so that it can be distributed to children in need at Christmas, and also $7,500 worth of food vouchers have been distributed as well. So that's already, this Christmas, as part of the Christmas Appeal, the impact that has been made. So 52 charities received cash grants, and in total, 58 charities received some form of support from the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Christmas Appeal. So I want to thank everyone that's been involved, particularly want to thank Nina, the lady merrison chair of the Charitable Trust, for the passionate work that she does as a volunteer to support the trust and raise money. On Friday night through to Sunday night, our assets will be lit in red and green. Why? What's red and green? Christmas, to support the Christmas programme, and also to acknowledge that this weekend we see the gearing up of the City Hall Light Show, and also this weekend, the Lord Mayor's Christmas Carols in the River Stage. The Christmas Carols are a hot ticket now that COVID is, you know, being increasingly, I guess, something that people are less concerned about in the main. And the tickets for the Christmas Carol sold out in two and a half hours. So all tickets have been sold out. But the good news is, people will be able to watch the carols on Channel 9 between now and Christmas. So for those who missed out on the tickets, there'll be an opportunity to see the spectacular programme on Channel 9. Well, it was an interesting morning on Sunday morning early, particularly in King George Square, which saw at the crack of dawn thousands of people coming into King George Square to watch the Soceroos versus Argentina game in the Football World Cup or the Soccer World Cup. We were obviously pleased to be able to facilitate this screening, and we're grateful for everyone who made that possible. We're obviously really happy with the turnout, we just weren't happy with the game result, unfortunately, but it was great to see so many Brisbane residents coming together at such an unusual time to get behind our Soceroos. And, you know, while we had hoped for a different result, that community spirit is alive and well, and that sporting spirit is alive and well. I, Mr. Chair, I wanted to now go into the items in front of us, so I'm doing which items first, Mr. Chair, can you give me some guidance?
Lord Mayor, debates first up on A, B, F and G.
A, B, F and G, thank you, that's helpful. Okay, so item A is the Audit Committee meeting report for 10th of November 2022. The independent audit committee meets on a regular basis and in accordance with our risk management procedures and also meeting all legislative requirements, we continue to operate that independent audit committee. They review councils' internal audit reports and operational risk control measures. And in the meeting, the QAO, the Queensland Audit Office, provided a progress update on their reports recently tabled and submitted to the Queensland Parliament as part of their draft 2022-23 audit plan. The chief information officer again gave the audit committee an update on cybersecurity and what we're doing to protect council as an organisation from the cybersecurity threats. This is something that I've also raised with the CEO at Civic Cabinet as well. Obviously, the Optus data breach and the Medibank private data breach, among many other data breaches, are of concern to all of us. And we know that there's increasingly sophisticated ways of attacking organisations. Now, the 2032 Olympic Games provides many opportunities for our city, but it also, I believe, means that there'll be people having a look at Brisbane now that it is well and truly on the world stage as a city. So I've asked the CEO to ensure that we step up our efforts to protect our organisation and the data of Brisbane residents, the data this organisation holds, and the CEO is gearing up those efforts. Now, we have an ongoing programme, but I think that needs to be further strengthened as we go forward. So this is obviously going to be an ongoing matter of discussion. The work of the audit committee is incredibly important, and we appreciate the work that this independent committee does, and we thank members for their ongoing contribution. Item B is the Stalls Board Submission, this SCP or Significant Contracting Plan for Electronic Security and Related Services. This replaces the current arrangement, which expires on the 31st of August next year. Council requires electronic security services predominantly for the installation and maintenance of CCTV systems in various council locations and facilities. The required services are split into four categories in this tender: reactive repairs, planned maintenance, corporate network security systems and software maintenance, as well as project installations. Council will seek proposals from suppliers who have the capability and capacity to support council's requirements in this field, based in each of those categories that I mentioned before. The market for electronic security and related services is provided by specialist service providers, many of which have Brisbane-based offices. As part of our local buy-procurement policy, there's a 30% weighting for local benefits in this tender. The new contract duration will be for initial term of three years, with options to extend for additional periods of up to two years, for a maximum term of five years. Item F, Mr. Chair, is the update to policies in the city administration and governance area. As part of the work done within council to ensure good governance and proper processes, we regularly update our suite of corporate policies, and that reviewing and updating process is coming through today. The submission represents the most recent policy updates proposed within the city administration and governance division of council. There are four parts to this submission. The first is an update to the production of council minutes policy. Some councillors may not be aware, but it was a Liberal Lord Mayor in 2005, in fact, who introduced the first Hansard-style council reporting minutes in Brisbane. And that was a big change when it comes to transparency and accountability. Previously, there was just a short summary of what was said produced, no word-for-word transcript. And so I have read many of the old minutes, and they really don't say anything at all. So it was just a summary of what was said. And so we were happy to shine a light on the lack of transparency provided by Labor for after 13 long years of hard labor. And we introduced the Hansard style reporting. We also introduced the live streaming of council meetings as well, something which we have been happy to support, and once again, further transparency on what happens in... what happens in the... Oh, councillor Cummings said the recordings were in the library. So it made it very accessible for people. So you'd have to go in and listen to hours and hours and take then manual notes to find out what actually happened and what was said. So that was Labor's idea of transparency, make it really hard for people to get access to what happened in a council meeting. We've got Hansard-style reporting, and we have live streaming of the meeting so that everyone can see. And that is something that we are proud to have, something we proactively supported. So this policy oversees the production of minutes following a recent review and updates are proposed. Section 53, 55 in brackets, three of the meeting's local law 2001 prohibits councillors from referring to council officers by name, except when complimenting them. Now, I wish this wasn't necessary, but unfortunately, it has become necessary because certain councillors insist on personally attacking council officers in this place.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Motion for an extension, seconded.
I have a motion for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Now, councillors can attack other councillors if they choose, and if they think that that is adding to the democratic process, they can attack me, and they do. It's water off a duck's back. But they should not be attacking individual council officers and naming them in those attacks. It is completely inappropriate and undermines the great work that they do. They are public servants, and they should not be attacked in this forum. So as I said, you can have robust political debate. If you think it adds to the democratic process, you can attack the administration, as they do every week, but do not attack council officers and name them in this place as part of those attacks. And so we're making sure that the policy is updated in that respect to reinforce that. Additionally, it's proposed to allow the CEO to remove any words from the transcript, which the Chair of Council requested to be withdrawn during the corresponding council meeting. So we've seen time and time again here, something is said in the place, one of the councillors or the Chair asks if that councillor will withdraw the comment. And so in that process of withdrawing, the minutes can then be updated to reflect the fact that that comment was withdrawn. And so that is...
Point of order to you, councillor Sri Rangam.
Well, the mayor take a quick question, just so I can understand this change?
No. Lord Mayor, you take a question?
No. So let's remember here that we do not have...
Councillor Johnston, please.
We do not have parliamentary privilege in this place, which means that there are legal consequences for potentially defamatory things that are said in this place. And that is why there is a process in place where if something that is potentially defamatory is said, a councillor can raise a point of order and ask whether that is considered to be a comment that can be withdrawn. The Chair can ask that as well, and this happens, you know, from time to time in this place. The thing about defamation, and there are several lawyers in this place, is that an organisation potentially is exposed if they publish defamatory things. And so publishing potentially defamatory statements in the Hansard minutes exposes not only the councillor who said those potentially defamatory things, but also the organisation of council itself. Now, this has progressed quite a lot in recent years, where even people who host a Facebook page, for example, if someone posts a defamatory comment on a councillor's Facebook page, and that defamatory comment... and that defamatory comment is not moderated, the councillor can also potentially be exposed to legal action for having a defamatory comment published on their page. And so this is reflecting the situation where we do not want council to potentially be liable for defamatory comments, so that the ratepayers end up having to pick up the bill for a councillor's defamatory comments. So this is legal protection for council itself. If a councillor insists on making defamatory comments, and they are asked to be withdrawn, and that councillor doesn't withdraw, I think it's one of those things where the councillor is taking their own legal risk there. But council needs to take all reasonable steps to not publish defamatory or potentially defamatory commentary or comments. So the second policy that's being updated is the intellectual property policy. Council owns and manages IP that it creates, procures or is licensed by third parties. Following a review, updates are proposed to include information on the procuring of IP in any goods and services provided to council, and removing some of the internal procedures which are no longer relevant or achievable due to the extent of owned and managed IP in council. The third item is the new safety camera policy, which is a major update of the current Brisbane City Safe Monitoring Policy Statement. The policy scope has been updated to include all safety cameras across the council network, including permanent, temporary, mobile and also body worn cameras as well. Council is committed to the safety and security of our employees, residents and visitors, and this policy ensures the responsible monitoring, storage, access and use of recorded material for safety cameras in our city. Now, finally, it's proposed to change the market research procurement and release policy to a procedure sitting under the City Communications Policy, which was most recently adopted by council last year. This will ensure the continued good governance we are seeking and robust independent representative data to assist in decision-making and strategic planning for our city. This community research also guides us to deliver on our important responsibilities to effectively communicate with residents, the residents that we serve. So I think the final one is item G. Is that correct?
Correct, Lord Mayor.
Chair? Item G is the Asset Management Policy and Long-Term Asset Management Plan. This is something that councillor Wines gets really excited about, and in fact, so excited that he was happy to have a message from himself in the front of this document. He's very passionate about long-term asset management, and we are glad that he is because we have an incredible array of assets under management in this city, billions of dollars of assets that need to be managed, need to be maintained, programmed, maintenance and planning needs to happen. And in fact, this building is a classic example, where this wonderful heritage building that we're in today, who did the work to restore and repair this building?
Liberals.
Liberal Party. And it was our side of politics that did the work. Which party let the building fall into disrepair and rot? It was the Labour Party. It was the Labour Party. Which side of politics is doing the work required to maintain the iconic Story Bridge? It is our side of politics. Now, there is not a single, there's not a single political advantage or vote in repairing the Story Bridge, but it needs to be done, and so we're doing it. It is the right thing to do, it's the responsible thing to do, and it is just one example of many of how we do the responsible thing when it comes to asset maintenance and management. And so this particular plan talks about our $35 billion worth of assets and the processes and procedures and policies that we use for effective asset management. And so I know councillor Wines will get very excited to talk to you more about this soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Cassidy, A, B, F and G.
Yes, thanks. I'll just ask that all items be taken seriously item for voting now, please.
All items seriously item for voting individually, okay.
That's correct. Starting with the Audit Committee Report, this is like Groundhog Day when this thing comes here. While this body here today, council, is the peak decision-making body of the council, of Brisbane City Council, councillors who are elected are given just a quick, small, brief overview of the discussions that occurred by unelected people overseeing the significant risk facing council and by extension, our community. Ratepayers are the ones that ultimately have to pick up the tab where council's risk management isn't up to scratch. We saw in there that there was talk of EBA negotiation, cybersecurity fraud and corruption, as well as risks to major transport projects, but no details whatsoever on how these major risks will be mitigated by this administration, or even exactly what they are. That's right, councillor Strunk. So the LNP want us to accept their old mantra, the old N part of LNP, the national mantra of just don't worry about that. That's the level of secrecy that this council now has, which is very akin to those dark old days of the National Party under the Bielke-Petersen government. So I guess that's why, I guess that's why that motto, that motto is backed with a vengeance. It's backed with a vengeance. Councillor Shunar over there, he, you know, he's the biggest hack there is when it comes to politics. He came, ran, ran in the Gab Award or East Brisbane Ward initially, before he moved out to a safe award. He'd be a student of history when it comes to the LNP. I'm sure, I'm sure he studied the old National Party playbook pretty well, because of seeing things creep into this place. And he often says, don't worry about that. He says, don't worry about that. The Audit Committee's got that in hand, you don't need to worry about that. Yeah, yeah, Mark Two, Joe Bielke over there. So we won't be supporting the report of the Audit Committee today, because as the decision-makers who are elected to this place, there is nowhere near enough information to be able to say that all of those risks, those serious risks that are facing our communities are being mitigated. Clause B, the Contracting Plan for Electrical Security, electronic security is essential for a safe workplace and community, but we need to ensure this contract is awarded to a company that looks after workers with good pay, safe conditions and secure work. We know the track record of this LNP administration when it comes to contracting out. We need to look after the welfare of workers, not just throw them to the lowest bidder in the market. There were plenty of discussions around, we think, there was a paragraph on it in the Audit Committee Report previously about cybersecurity, and that is shown as a risk in this contract before us today, but they never talk about the risk of exploitation, which is real and alive under this LNP administration. Certainly is time to shine more of a light on those contracting processes. The next item, clause F, we'll get to in just a moment, which is the City Administration and Governance Updates to Policies. So item two before us, which we heard a bit about from the Lord Mayor in this suite of policy changes, is to allow the Brisbane City Council CEO to edit the transcript of council meetings before they are confirmed and released to the public. On what planet did someone come up with this proposal, and how did they think it was okay? Talk about not passing the pub test. I wonder whether this did come from the CEO, whether it came from the Lord Mayor or from Civic Cabinet. We know that the CEO is essentially part of Civic Cabinet now alongside the Lord Mayor's Chief of Staff and Director of Communications as well in those Civic Cabinet meetings. In the last couple of weeks, we've had the Lord Mayor crowing about the Hansard style of records that we have at this meeting, and he did again today. But then when he's caught out, when he's caught out and those Hansard-style records pick him up on those things, he decides to start tinkering with the rules. It's bad enough that last week, due to the secrecy of this LNP administration, we were not allowed to tell the ratepayers what projects had caused the budget to blow out by $400 million. Secrecy is the game of this LNP administration, and one of the reasons they give for wanting this power to edit council transcripts is basically to remove a slip of the tongue, what like getting the facts out to ratepayers. Councillors are accountable to their communities and bound by the Code of Conduct. We don't need the CEO who is unelected and not accountable to the community to have the power to alter the official record of the decisions made in this council chamber. Let's not forget that the Lord Mayor has the power to direct the CEO. We need more accountability, not less. The Lord Mayor has the unique position under the City of Brisbane Act to be able to direct the CEO to do anything, basically. So this kind of close arrangement and tinkering around with the official records here in council certainly would not pass a pub test if the, if the public will find out about it, and they will soon. So it's time to lift the lid on this secretive, lazy and inward-looking administration, not to tighten it further. It's actions like these, secrecy around decision-making, changing of official records, that are more akin to tinpot dictators than elected councils here in Australia. But in our experience here in Australia, governments and administrations at a council level that have been in power for far too long do these sorts of things, and that's what we're seeing here under the administration. The other point, the market research procurement and release policy that Lord Mayor talked about, it's a pity that Medibank and Optus didn't employ the secrecy and the skills of this LNP administration to hide things. The Russian hackers wouldn't have stood a chance. Along that thread of secrecy, we now see item three, seeking to make market research more secret from the people of Brisbane, so the research they're doing on the people of Brisbane secret from the people of Brisbane, using their money all along the way. Now, a person might say, you know, on certain things, that's fair enough, some things should be, should be kept secret for the greater good. But when you discover that Brisbane ratepayers have forked out almost $3 million on three, over three years for market research, you really have to wonder if that is really the case, if it really is for the greater good. Data release, and Quan just recently revealed the LNP had spent $886,000 on market research in the 2122 financial year, and that research, which we sourced in a request file in July 2022, outlined some of the qualitative research undertaken by this council since 2019. Some notable inclusions are on the Metro campaign, which has seen the budget, of course, blow up from $944 million to $1.7 billion. Research on council's narrative and driving positive sentiment about council, about budget message, the Lord Mayor's budget messaging, and the Brisbane campaign, which was a PR campaign in the lead-up to the last council election, which is now ramping up again in the lead-up to the next council election. $4 million was spent on the Brisbane advertising campaign from October 2019 to May 2020. Now, this is a real doozy, this one, so you've got to sort of understand, is this really good value for money and trying to understand the sentiments? We know that they've used market research to test messages that go into the Living in Brisbane newsletter. We found out through that research that the least popular item in the Living in Brisbane newsletter was the Lord Mayor's message, and people thought that could be ditched for something more useful. He'll never do that. But some of the, some of the research that was particularly odd and doesn't, didn't really strike you as very useful, other than for political purposes, was understanding what 40 to 54-year-old men cared about. I'm sure that sounds like a sort of particular group that you'd, you'd do focus groups on and research on about particular political messaging, rather than about broader council services, if you ask me. They did, they did that, that research about the mobile app, the Brisbane mobile app, and the Living in Brisbane newsletter to test their political messages to a certain group of people that they wanted to reach. So no wonder this LNP administration wants to put a cone of silence around the money they're spending on qualitative market research. The secrecy and want to control all information by this tired and out-of-touch council now knows no bounds. This LNP administration is power crazy, they're becoming less transparent by the day. Who knows what will be next on the chopping block in terms of accountability and transparency? Moving on to item G, the Asset Management Policy and Long-Term Asset Management Plan. There is a real need for an asset management policy and plan, we understand that. It's something that the community expects their council to do, to manage their assets in a strategic way and in a long-term way, and making sure that they are getting a decent return for their rates and those services and infrastructure in the community is meeting those expectations.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Second. A motion for extension of time for the Leader of the Opposition, moved by councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Strunk. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
But the problem is, this LNP administration is just simply not managing community assets in a good way. Our suburbs are being neglected. I've lost count now of the amount of times that I'll talk to one of our hard-working council staff out in the field about the need for the maintenance on basic assets, like it could be footpaths, park, playground upgrades, drainage upgrades, road projects, but get the same response every single time. It's a frustration I share with them, there is not enough funding. These, these projects are warranted, we need to do upgrades to these community assets, but there is no money in the Lord Mayor's budget for the basics in the suburbs. Here's some examples, some basic tidal valves broken along the Sangat foreshore. They sat broken for three years before a pretty paltry amount was finally allocated to fix them. That's not very good asset management when those failed assets were flooding people's homes for three years before the Lord Mayor could bother to allocate any money to their repair. Go down the road to the large drain on Kempsford Street in Sangat, an open drain that's rarely maintained or cleaned because of lack of resources. It's overexcavated now and is awaiting funding for an upgrade. That's been awaiting funding from the LNP Mayor and his predecessors for a decade. To them, I guess, what's another decade for communities that regularly flood to wait for a, a simple drainage upgrade? We've seen the devastating case of the East Brisbane Bowls Club, a council-owned asset that was used by the community. The LNP decided to bulldoze it despite the community saying no, we wanted to keep it. Then they paused the bulldozers for a little while and then said, well, we will, we will use, the LNP said they will use that asset for council purposes. Fast forward a few months, then they said that it could no longer be used because of the lack of maintenance, and they'd let it deteriorate so far that they couldn't even enter the building without hazmat suits, basically. And here's the kicker, councillor Ryan Murphy scoffed during the debate and said, why would the LNP have maintained it if they intended to bulldoze it? That's the LNP approach to our community assets. The drainage budget is stagnant, the LNP cut $50 million from the infrastructure and community budgets last week due to their incompetence, and we heard from the Lord Mayor today that he has absolutely no intention of fulfilling his promises to the people of Brisbane in completing all of the items that he listed and published on the website as part of his budget documents in those suburban works' schedules. Our community is not getting good value for money from this LNP administration. Our city is growing, demands for better services and more investment in our community assets grow too. With the Olympic and Paralympic Games just around the corner now, pressure on our ailing assets will get greater, but the LNP are leaving our suburbs to rot. These plans are important, but when the LNP ignore them, spend every last cent covering cost blowouts on inner-city projects instead of investing in the suburbs, they really aren't worth the paper they're written on. I do feel for the thousands of hard-working council staff out there. I know they're committed to the work they do on behalf of the residents of Brisbane, but they really, really aren't backed by this LNP rabble here in council.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move the council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
We have a motion for an afternoon tea break, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Okay, we'll continue the debate on items A, B, F and G. Is there any further debate?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. It's really great to be here with you today to talk about the report in front of us, in particular item G, the Long-Term Asset Management Plan. Now, the Long-Term Asset Management Plan is a statutorily required document so as to prove to anyone who wishes to see it, but in particular the state government, that we have given due care and attention to asset management. Now, what, can I draw the council's attention to page nine, the purpose of the LTAM? Now, the Lord Mayor touched on this very briefly, but I have committed a great deal of time and effort to this document to make sure that the framework of asset management in this city is properly outlined and illustrated in here. Can I draw the council's attention to page 12 of the document, which outlines the asset management principles? I won't read them all, but the... I won't read them all, but the the main ones are the assets, assets are planned, designed and managed to be operationally resilient, to mitigate risks and to withstand and withstand and recover from disruption and disaster, and that we are, and that the final point, that council employees are committed to continuous improvement and the simplification of processes. So what is this? Some people ask, what is this document? And the easiest way to imagine it, and I imagine, I always like to preempt preempt the criticism, because you can always see the sorts of things that that will be crit, will be said of this. Why doesn't it do this? Why hasn't it said that? And there'll be a whole range of effective nagging about why a minor concern isn't in this particular document. Well, can I encourage all councillors to consider this document to be the rod in the wardrobe upon which all other policies hang off? All right? This is, this is the central framework, all right? The long term asset management plan, it's a framework, and then the other policies rest on this particular framework. So I think that 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 needs to be explained, because I think that can sometimes get lost on people, what this is. This is, I imagine, if you imagine the higher one, then the other ones fit in under it with these as guiding principles. Now, on page 12, as I said earlier, it outlined the principles. Through the document, you can read where the principle can be found, and then a discussion of further concepts behind it. So as I said, assets planned, designed and managed to be operationally resilient to mitigate risks and withstand and recover from disruption and disasters, you can read more about that particular one, page 18, under the section climate. It specifically notes climate change, the risks of climate change, the risks of extreme weather, the risks of disaster, that they how they pose threats to our assets. And one of these things, how does it, how does this affect how council conducts itself in a practical way? Well, over, I'll give a practical example. Over time, what had been historically wooden bridges are converted into concrete and steel bridges. A great example is one that councillor Timmy mentioned earlier in the meeting, the Gresham Street Bridge. A hundred year old wooden bridge is now replaced by a concrete and steel bridge that has already been flooded while it was under construction. It was built and designed to such a level that that flood only pushed it back some weeks, pushed back construction and the the final ribbon cutting some weeks. But also, the important part is the new structure provided protection for the water and sewer for that community. So what it means is, there is a, an eye over the hill, I suppose, to what could be coming, and you build things in a way that they will be able to handle these sorts of things. You know, when we consider, if we stay on climate change, as we well know, the doomsayers of climate change have have, the the 10 year windows have all passed. So climate change, the effects of climate change are with us. So we should prepare for our assets and things to be able to handle those sorts of changes. So, and Gresham Street Bridge is a great example. I can think of the Hay Street Bridge in Mitchelton, which is a pedestrian bridge, and the changes were made there, and it also survived the flood comfortably. Right now, in councillor Cook's ward, please excuse my pronunciation, but we are replacing the Mowelia Street Bridge with a a concrete and steel structure, again, to be able to handle extreme weather events. So what we're saying is that this document provides the policy work to make sure that our assets can handle extreme weather. That's one of the main principles that that we dealt with in here. But more than that, improve, constant improvement over time, and a whole range of other assets. But I must go back to this earlier point. Why do we do these policy documents? It's to make sure that the physical structures in our city conform to a certain set of values agreed in this room. That's what it's all about, and that's what we're discussing here at this point. So can I encourage all councillors to give this particular document due consideration? Understand that it sets a framework, and it is a policy document upon which other policy documents will sit, which will provide more detail, which will go into more precision about particulars of things, but this is the guiding principle that provides a framework and a vision for 20 years of how we will manage our assets in a long term way. Can I take a moment, please, to recognise Mr Joe Bannon and his team and the efforts that they have done to produce this document, and they, and his and their team's commitment to meaningful asset management, and to make sure that the due investment occurs to those items so that we don't have surprises? The Lord Mayor in his notes earlier spoke about City Hall, I recall, when that particular item came up, it was a surprise. Well, the point is to no longer have surprises, to have plans, and that if, and that due maintenance is given to these assets. So this is the policy that sits behind it. I commend it to the chamber, and I look forward to further comments on it.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on items F and G. I don't think I'll speak on A and B, but I'll mention them, I might, just in case. I'd like to start with item F, the city plan, the city administration and governance update to policies. I don't support this item. There are quite a few new councillors in this place, and I guess probably some of them don't know why I vote against the minutes, but back in about 2012, 13, Milton Dick was the leader of the Labour Opposition. The then Peter Rule, I can't think of what he's, city clerk, county clerk, I think it was, decided to unilaterally edit the council minutes. And obviously, that's not the done thing. And he did this because both councillor Dick and myself were very critical of the sweetheart deal the CEO of council did with a major developer at Tennyson. There was a handshake and land.
Point of order.
Point of order, Jethi.
Mr Chair, this is impuding motive that a people have long led this place and absolutely out of line.
Councillor Johnston, I can understand the context of the background to your opposition to it, but if you could stick to that context, rather than start to impugn the motive of those who are no longer here.
I'm not impugning motive. It was acknowledged as a handshake deal. The, the, what is it, the valuation was only done afterwards to prove up the case, and in the end, council swapped the valuation of the land for the playground. It was, it was a shocking arrangement. Now, we were critical of that, and my comments and those of councillor Dix were stricken from the council record, not unreasonably, you know, just a matter of actual factual observation about what had happened.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of.
I think you, I saw you look a number of times in that direction. I think you can hear the conversation that makes it very difficult to hear councillor Johnston, so if you could just maintain.
Councillor Cook, thank you, councillor Cook. Councillors, if we could give councillor Johnston the opportunity to speak. Councillor Johnston.
Today, this policy takes it a step further, and in my view, it's a step too far. Under this policy, the CEO of council will now be able to remove any council officers' names, other than if they're being complimented. Now, the meeting's local law 2001 does not do what the, what the Lord Mayor actually said. It says you can refer to council officers by their position. And I presume that if you continue to refer to the CEO as being somebody that's not supported, that will remain in the minutes. But one of the subsections in section 55 then says you can compliment council officers by name. So there is not actually the restriction that is being discussed in this policy here today, in the meeting's local law in section 55. It has been fundamentally misrepresented by the Lord Mayor, and this, this is an absolute clear attempt at censorship by the CEO of council and the Lord Mayor to restrict and to stop any alternate views and criticism of the decision of this council being recorded publicly in the minutes. Now, unfortunately, sometimes criticism is necessary. It's necessary because this LMP administration has delegated away the powers that were exercised by councillors over the past decade extraordinarily, extraordinarily. And as a result, unelected council officers make big decisions about the outcomes that affect Brisbane ratepayers. Now, those officers are accountable and responsible for those decisions. What this says is, we can't even mention them. And if we're a little bit critical of them, then their name will be removed. Now, the big problem with this is, it goes a step too far by allowing the chair of council to remove any words from the transcript that they deem to ask the CEO to remove. Now, the CEO, sorry, the chair of council is a political operative, a political operative. And it is clear, over the time that I've been here, that I am told to withdraw things constantly that other councillors are not. So are councillors, if they're told to withdraw, are all councillors going to have it removed? Is there going to be any clarity around what sections are going to be removed? Or is it just going to be done secretly by the chair of council like it was done by Peter Rule back in the day, and we have to read through the whole lot of the raw transcript to find out what's happened? This is censorship. Worse than that, it is political censorship, because it's being done by an LMP chairperson who then directs the CEO, and that's not supposed to happen, it's not a decision of this council, it is completely an LMP chair telling the CEO what to do, and he goes away and does it. That is essentially what is being proposed here before us today. That is political censorship, and I don't support it. This council has lost its way. This council does not believe in being accountable to the ratepayers of Brisbane. This council, this LMP council has delegated its powers, it doesn't want to be accountable for the decision making, and now any kind of criticism is going to be stricken from the record. Meanwhile, if I ask somebody to withdraw something, like Crister Adams' foul, councillor Crister Adams' foul comments earlier this year, I'm told, no, that can't be withdrawn. But if I'm even a little bit critical of councillor James Mackay turning his back on me, I get noted for inappropriate conduct. This is the political nature of the chair of council and giving the power of the chair of council to change the public record, which is what is proposed here, this is changing the public record, is absolutely not on, and I don't support it, and I won't be voting for it. There's a whole heap of other problems with these policies too. But you know, you know that you're in the end stages of an administration when you see them changing the policies to hide what they're doing, and that is essentially what's going on here, and to silence criticism. That's what happens in third world countries, in third world dictatorships, and now that's what's going to happen in Brisbane City Council. I don't support it. On the long term asset management plan, look, there's nothing wrong with the plan itself, but there is a really, really big problem with the way in which it is being administered and delivered. So I just want to put on the record very briefly a couple of examples. So one of the principles that is in here is that an asset's condition, functionality and utilisation meet the applicable standard to provide the community's level of service requirements. It goes on to say things like, we live in a community, we create a community that we're proud to belong to, we're inclusive and get involved, and it goes on and on. So here's the best example of how this council can't deliver this policy. Barbecues, barbecues. Let me be as simple as I can about this. All over Brisbane for the past decade, wood fired barbecues have rusted in place, have been unilaterally removed by this administration and not replaced. There's been no thought or investment given by this administration to, but they do know the asset is no longer fit for purpose, but they won't replace them. They won't fix them, they won't replace them. That's just one example of how, we've got a lovely U-Bute policy, that's probably got the Lord Mayor's picture in it somewhere, but council does not fund the necessary delivery to achieve the stated purpose of delivering facilities that reflect community need and community use standards. Now, that's not the only one. We've got playgrounds in My Ward that are 30 and 40 years old, they're well out of date, there's no plans to replace them. We've got drainage that has been identified in council reports more than 20 years ago, saying it is, it doesn't cope with the level of rainfall now, and that needs to be replaced. There's no plan to replace it. So the big problem here is, this is a U-Bute shiny policy, but this administration does not do the work to deliver the maintenance, the restoration, and the replacement of the assets in line with the standards it's set in this policy. And to give you one last example, the pontoon at Chelma. For years and years and years, we had a public pontoon at Chelma under the Walter Taylor Bridge. It got washed away in the 2011 floods, and it was never replaced, despite petitions, despite requests, despite letters. This administration simply got rid of a public asset that our community wants. This is the best examples of how this LMP council is failing Brisbane residents.
Further debate? Councillor Sri Rangadharthan.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak primarily on, which item was it actually?
Items A, B, F and G, councillor.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak primarily on item F, but just quickly on item G. Councillor Johnston, I remember that pontoon, I used to go fishing there, back before I became a vegetarian. It's a great spot. I, even though I occasionally caught stuff there, but I was never quite game to eat it. It is a shame when we lose those public assets.
That's the way.
Yeah, it's not, not good enough for me in that river. Look, just with item F, real, real brief, I, I see some of councillor Johnston's concerns, and just to the commentary the mayor made earlier around the appropriateness of mentioning public servants by name in the chamber, I, I think the, the philosophical, the intellectual case to be concerned about this is that actually, public servants do wield political power. They are not politicians, they are not democratically elected, but they do make policy decisions where they weigh up competing interests and, and make decisions about what is in the public interest and in the long term good. So in that sense, they are essentially making decisions that affect a really large number of people, and those, that's not a case of them recommending decisions and then the politicians actually sign off on them. The public servants in practice are making decisions themselves, and often they're making quite substantial decisions that have a very material impact on people's lives. So in that context, where public servants are making public policy decisions about, you know, competing views of the good, et cetera, et cetera, they, they should be subject to legitimate scrutiny and critique. And I, I do share concerns about unreasonably attacking public servants, but I think there is a difference between bad faith attacks and measured and legitimate critique, and particularly senior managers, department heads, et cetera. I think they, they should not be immune from public criticism by name in, in the council chamber. I think they should have fair opportunities to respond, and I think sometimes sessions like the equivalent of budget estimates would be better for that staff. But I, I objected to the suggestion that we should categorically rule out ever naming a public servant in an unfavourable light, because I think there is an important kind of fundamental element in terms of how we as elected representatives hold the bureaucracy to account. And I, I often feel like some of these public servants have a lot more power and influence than I do. I think some of those senior branch managers, et cetera, are incredibly powerful and, and wield a great deal of influence over the future of the city. So the suggestion that because they're public servants, they shouldn't be held accountable, or that it's not right to publicly discuss the decisions they've made, I, I think is probably stretching things a little too far. I, I do encourage all councillors in this chamber to be, be moderate and measured in, in our criticism, and I don't think I've ever singled out or named a, a public servant in a negative light in this chamber, but, and I, I don't think I need to usually, but I, I think it shouldn't be illegal for us to do so. I don't think it should be like a violation of the meeting's local law if we say, oh, look, so and so branch manager did the wrong thing here, and, and there needs to be some checks and balances on, on their behaviour. I think that we should be allowed to do that as councillors. And so I think it's a shame that this, this particular item is going to such great degrees to limit and restrict our ability to freely criticise and, and make legitimate, raise legitimate concerns about the behaviour of public servants, because they are not immune to criticism and they, they are not immune to making mistakes. And so, yeah, I, I think the mayor is right to encourage councillors not to. And so yeah, I, I think the mayor is right to encourage councillors not to attack public servants unfairly, but if, if a public servant, particularly one in a senior position of power and influence, does something wrong, we should be allowed to talk about that. And I'm concerned that this particular amendment undermines that power to an unnecessary degree. Noting, of course, that we still do have defamation laws as well. So if a public servant is spoken about in a negative context in this chamber and feels that was really unfair and that their, their reputation's been unfairly damaged, then they do have avenues available. So I, I, I don't, I think we're sort of probably going a little bit too far here in, in terms of restricting the ability for councillors to freely express their opinions. Similarly, I think the, giving the CEO the power to amend the minutes at, at the request of the Chair is, is really concerning and goes way too far, because as councillor Johnson alluded to, the CEO has become a politicised role. Maybe it wasn't at some point, I don't know, but certainly my impression is that the CEO is appointed by the LNP and tends to serve the interests of the LNP administration. Maybe that's not true, but that's certainly the impression I have as another city councillor here, and I'm sure a lot of members of the public would have a similar impression. So there's a concern there that someone who's essentially a, a political staffer in many respects can decide that the, the minutes are going to be amended to, to change the written record of what council has said in this place. And there is a crucial element to this, which I think maybe even whoever drafted this change, e- either they did it deliberately, in which case that, that's very uncool of them, but perhaps it was a, a genuine oversight, which is that if, if a councillor agrees to withdraw a statement, then sure, the CEO should be able to amend the transcript and say, okay, well, the council said something, they were asked to withdraw, they agreed to withdraw, we'll amend the transcript to reflect that. But if the Chair asks the councillor to withdraw something and the council refuses, then under no circumstances should the CEO and the Chair have the power to remove that from the meeting record. That's, that's, that's directly twisting what a councillor has said against their will. If the councillor consents to having what they've said on record edited, I think that's a very different matter. But what, the, the wording of this policy, as I read it, it doesn't say if, if commentary is withdrawn, it, it says if they are asked to withdraw. And I, I know there have been many occasions where the Chair or the Deputy Chair has unreasonably asked the councillor to withdraw something, or has asked them to withdraw something and they've, they've simply declined. If, if they're asked to withdraw something and they decline, then the Chair should not be editing the transcripts to act like they've withdrawn it. And I, I'd be interested in hearing directly from either the Chair or the Deputy Chair on that particular matter, because I think a lot of this goes to how the Chair's going to enforce these rules and, and act on this stuff in practice. So through you, councillor McGlocklin, I, I hope the Chair will be good enough to get up and speak to this and clarify that you will not be editing our, the, the written transcript of our comments in this place without, without our consent. I think it would be deeply concerning if there was a situation where the Chair asks me to withdraw a comment and I respectfully decline to withdraw, and then the Chair goes and, and later edits that, or asks the CEO to edit that without my consent or permission. I, I think that would be, well, yeah, I'd, I'd really appreciate if the Chair wants to get up and speak to this, because my reading of the policy is that that, that it gives the Chair and the CEO of the chamber that power, and I think that's, raises quite legitimate concerns about censorship. And I, I worry that a future CEO or a future Chair who are acting in bad faith could abuse that power. I'm not suggesting that councillor McGlocklin or councillor Matic would ever do that, but I, I worry about creating a framework that gives the Chair of Council the power to literally retroactively edit what I've said in this chamber. That, that feels deeply problematic to me, so I, I'm also not going to support that one.
Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item B and item F as well. Just very briefly on item B. Council is committed to the safety and security of our stakeholders, including our employees, our residents and our visitors to our premises. The current CPA for electronic security expires in August next year, and the submission seeks approval of the significant contracting plan to issue a tender to establish a new corporate procurement arrangement for electronic security and related services. The corporate security team manage this, manages this within council, and we thank them for their important work to keep us safe. On item F, Mr Deputy Chair, it's a submission with updates to council policies in the city administration and governance division. Corporate rules are the way that council directs the execution of its responsibilities and functions to ensure consistency and effectiveness. Council policies are intended to be strategic statements of council's position on a range of subjects. Procedures are explanations of how council must operate and guidelines set out the recommended ways of implementing policy. All of council's corporate rules are subject to regular review to ensure that they remain relevant and responsive to changes in our legislation, changes in our local laws and other external factors. As a result of recent routine policy reviews in this area, there are changes affecting four policies, and they are outlined in this item. The first, which has been, the cause of a lot of debate this afternoon, is the production of council minutes policy. Now, Mr Deputy Chair, as the Lord Mayor said, it was under a Liberal Lord Mayor that Brisbane City Council introduced a full Hansard-style council minutes in 2005. It exceeds what is required under the state legislation. The minutes of the meetings held under the former administration, the Sully administration, look very different indeed to the minutes that we see today. The policy oversees the production of the minutes, and following a recent review, it proposes a couple of updates. Section 55.3 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, which was updated and adopted by this chamber here last year, prohibits councillors from referring to council officers by name, except when complimenting them, and this is reflected in the updated policy. Additionally, it's proposed to allow the CEO to remove any words from the transcript which the Chair of Council requests to be withdrawn during the meeting. As council is producing such a complete record of the meeting, consideration must be given to the publication of material where it may have legal implications, commercial impacts or other similar matters. And that's why it's important to have the policy to protect council, but more importantly, to protect councillors. Mr Deputy Chair, the broad concept of tweaking the minutes from this place is not new. In fact, the policy has always allowed the town clerk or the CEO to make amendments. The original policy went to Cabinet and Council in 2005, back when Labour had a majority in this place. The only change, there weren't even minutes then, thank you councillor Cumming, thank you for the interjection. The only change here removes references to council officer names which were requested to be withdrawn during the meeting. Mr Deputy Chair, the second policy is the intellectual property policy. The policy is being updated to include that council should seek to procure the IP in any goods or services provided to council. It's also proposed to remove some internal procedures which are no longer relevant or achievable due to the vast extent of owned and managed IP in council and which are not needed in council's high-level policy statement. The third item is the safety camera policy. This was previously known as the Brisbane City Safe Monitoring Policy Statement. This was focused mainly on our city safe camera network. Recognising this, the policy is now much more all-encompassing when it comes to the use of safety cameras by council. It now covers all safety cameras, including those that are permanent, temporary, mobile and our body-worn cameras. Given the sensitive nature of the important work, it's vital we continue to have strong governance in this space, and the updated policy facilitates that. Finally, it's proposed to change the market research procurement and release policy to a procedure sitting under the city communication policy. The city communication policy guides a centre-led, one-council approach to all communication with our residents, and the policy was most recently adopted by council last year. Community research helps council facilitate information-based decision-making. High-quality research is a strategic investment, and it helps council plan, monitor, improve its communication policies, strategies, programmes and services to meet the needs of our, of our current residents and future ones as well. We know that those opposite Mr Deputy Chair gather their mates to generate confected outrage on various matters, but that's not how you comprehensively evaluate community feedback. We take a more scientific approach rather than playing political games. So when Labour criticise research...
Councillors, please.
So when Labour criticise research, what they're saying is, they don't actually care what residents think. Unless you're one of the small, small and probably decreasing Labour members, you won't be heard by that party. It is appropriate that ways of delivering this research programme sits as a procedure underneath the overarching policy, and I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you councillor. Is there any further debate? No further debate, I'll now put items A, B, F and G for votes, Sari Adam. So we'll start with item A. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillors Cassidy and Cook. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells.
Lot of coughing in here. There's a lot of coughing.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 5 against.
The ayes have it. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item F. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
Division.
Division. Division called by councillor Johnson and by councillor Cook. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Plaques, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 6 against.
The ayes have it. We'll now move to the last item, item G. Item G, those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we'll now move to items C, D and E. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak obviously on item C, D and E, as you mentioned. Item C is the minor and administrative amendments to the Brisbane City Plan 2014, package L. So following the state government's changes to the planning regulation on the 23rd of September, this administrative amendment to the city plan is required to update several definitions. The definition changes applies to dual occupancy, dwelling house, multiple dwelling, secondary dwelling, non-residential workforce and rural workers accommodation. In addition, minor L also includes changes to several city plan overlay maps. There are two properties being added to the dwelling house character overlay to correct a mapping error, and there's an update to the heritage overlay to remove an adjoining heritage subcategory. The changes proposed under this minor and administrative amendment, package L, maintains the currency of the city plan, and due to the nature of the administrative changes, the changes can be made almost immediately with them becoming effective in city plan in March next year. The second item D is the major amendment to Brisbane City Plan 2014, major amendment, package L. So the proposed changes in major L achieve actions set out in Brisbane's Future Blueprint, as was indicated by the Lord Mayor earlier today, specifically protecting the Brisbane backyard and our unique character, as well as ensuring best practice design that complements the character of Brisbane. The proposed changes will refine our current policy settings to better retain and enhance traditional building character and character streetscapes while maintaining flexibility so homeowners can maintain, extend and update their homes for modern living. The proposed amendment will also support improved design outcomes for small lot dwelling houses, secondary dwellings, self-contained residents and rooming accommodation. In September, the state changed the planning regulations with regards to secondary dwellings, also known as granny flats, including changing the definitions and granting the ability to rent these types of dwellings out to those who are not directly family. That was an outcome from, directly from their housing summit. This regulation chain and the city plan amendment facilitates the potential for higher uptake of granny flats in bid to ease the housing crisis. In addition to this, council is committed to increasing the area required for deep planning in new development from 10 to 15% of the side area in this package. The proposed amendment will also clarify design requirements to ensure successful establishment, optimum growth and long-term survival, survival of subtropical landscaping. Council has previously decided to amend city plan, and subsequently, the amendment package has now been prepared and is presented for endorsement. The proposed amendment will proceed to state interest check before full public consultation occurs next year. And then, item E, the major amendment to city plan, Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan, which as you know, Deputy Mayor, I had the joy of starting as the Chair of Planning. It is now here, it is an area that is strategically located to become a hub for residential and employment nuisance, given its proximity to the CBD and the access to a range of transport options. It presents an opportunity to review the relevant zone and given the current housing crisis the state and Brisbane is facing. One of the key drivers for accommodating change in the area are the upgrades to the Maruka and Salisbury train stations that are being done as part of Cross River Rail and also our recently updated industrial strategy. During the budget, the Lord Mayor announced the suburban renewal precincts as a key initiative for our team. This neighbourhood plan provides an opportunity to review and consider the use of land along the Maruka Magic Mile, as it's known along that corridor, and transform it into a world-class business and living precinct that focuses, focuses on high-tech, clean industry offices and well-designed residential buildings. Maruka and Salisbury are also significant employment generators forming part of the South West industrial gateway and identified as a major industry area within our industrial strategy. The draft plan retains low-density residential housing in most of the area whilst providing increased housing choice with a mix of housing density and types in locations near schools, services, employment and public transport infrastructure. This ensures most of the area remains unchanged whilst the suburban amenity of the area is protected. Following technical reviews and surveys, the draft plan seeks to maintain and further enhance character protections in the local area. This includes incorporating changes made under the recent TLPI implemented for the Maruka War Housing Precinct, and as such, existing protections will continue in the Clifton Hill Precinct. Additional character residential areas in key locations are also protected. Streetscapes and walkability between major employment areas, residential areas and public transport infrastructure are also enhanced. The draft plan is projected to add an additional 3,040 potential residential dwellings into this important growing part of our CBD. The neighbourhood plan will help guide... The neighbourhood plan will help guide future development and coordinate land use and infrastructure over a ten-year period and beyond. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Deputy Chair. Could I ask that item E? No. Just item E be taken, seriate them for voting, please.
I think you had, right at the beginning of the debate, councillor Cassidy, my understanding was that-
Well, when I started, I just wanted A, B, F and G. I never asked about T, D and E.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll do-
Whatever. Yeah, whatever. That's fine.
Right, so-
Yeah, I never asked for those previously. I'm happy for them to be taken separately, but as long as E is separate from the other two.
All right, thank you.
So I'll speak on all of these, and starting with item C, the minor and administrative amendments to Brisbane City Plan, obviously, package L linked to the major amendment there. Some of the changes, obviously, are related and linked to the changes the state government has brought in, which are reflected in item D as well. Obviously, some will be around zoning changes and changes to land use through development applications, neighbourhood plan changes and other amendments and things like that, some of which we have agreed to, some of which we haven't, obviously, been on record about that. But the main changes here contained in item D, which is the major amendment, and primarily based, as we've heard, on changes the state government have brought in in response to the housing summit, both in the lead-up to and as a result of as well. The deep planting changes, so most of those things, like granny flats, or better described here as secondary dwellings, as the better reflection of their use. The deep planting changes, as we've heard, were linked to the Plan Your Brisbane game back in 2019, I think that was, at the time. So I guess this does, in a way, also tell the story of the LMP's approach to planning and development here in Brisbane. They're pushed by the development industry to a certain end. It's full steam ahead, but when it comes to being driven by a housing crisis or community sentiment, it's go as slow as you possibly can for the LMP. These changes are all happening, of course, in the absence of a housing strategy as well. Up until this week and maybe last week, the LMP just didn't talk about it, wouldn't talk about the fact that they hadn't delivered a housing strategy which they had promised they would way back in 2019. The last week or two, they're now saying it's all the state government's fault. They've tried to blame everyone and finally get to the point where they say they can't deliver it because it's all the state government's fault. So we're being asked here, and in the next item as well, on the neighbourhood plan, to make changes, make informed decisions without fully understanding the housing needs of Brisbane and what those solutions are because of the political decisions of the LMP mayor and his LMP administration. We support the protection of character buildings in the suburbs, and the clear guidelines that are contained are important. They are the built heritage of Brisbane and tells the story of how our city of suburbs developed over the last hundred-plus years. We also support the increase in deep planting requirements. For too long, under this LMP administration, we've seen housing developments, whether they are mass, low-density residential housing developments out in the outer suburbs, or unit townhouse developments, or more intense unit developments in the inner city, becoming heat sinks with inadequate planting requirements. We hope that the planning changes that do come into force once the consultation period is done and the amendments that are brought actually do have real requirements for deep planting, and they're not sort of skirted like the rooftop garden amendment that we saw last year, earlier this year, recently anyway, which was presented to everyone as a great way to get more green space in our denser parts of the city, but in reality, what that became was more space for pools, for rooftop bars and for pot plants to be counted as gardens and counted as green space. So we certainly will be waiting to see what the amendments really are when it comes to deep planting. Rooming accommodation is an important part of the housing mix for those generally on the lowest income in our city, but it must be well-regulated to ensure that those tenants themselves are protected and provided for, and neighbours don't see the amenity of their streets affected by the built form and traffic pressures. So if they are to be genuinely affordable forms of housing, then these requirements are absolutely important. We don't want situations where developers can sneak fully self-contained units for higher rental yields in what should be genuine rooming accommodation, which fits a genuine need in the market. Similarly, the changes to granny flats to be genuine secondary dwellings is an important step, we think. Their use has been limited to date, but if we can deliver more connected communities and people seek different types of places to live in a growing city, then we should plan for smaller dwellings for them. There was a programme on, well, a piece on the 7.30 Programme recently about the challenges facing predominantly single older women in Brisbane finding housing at the moment. The group of people who predominantly have very small supernest eggs and are not necessarily eligible or can find it easy to get on to the social housing waitlist, as we know, is a real crisis at the moment. So seeking private rentals. And one of the people who featured on that was the former CEO of Sandbag, the Sandgate Brackenridge Action Group, Sandgate Community Centre. And her struggle has been real, and she's become a real advocate for that. And that organisation she's part of was the recent Q Shelter Housing Workshop that they held a couple of weeks ago, which I attended. And some of the solutions which meet the needs of that particular group of the community include things like secondary dwellings and self-contained units within single properties that can be rented out. They are the ideal location for a lot of people who are seeking smaller types of accommodation. So we certainly support that being expanded beyond the household itself, where it is appropriate, and not absolutely every backyard, obviously. So these challenges and changes do need to be consulted on. We support that step today and hope that there's a genuine consultation as well. Perhaps, it's not before us today what form that will necessarily take and whether there's a genuine budget around consultation beyond, I suppose, putting it on a website and sending out a single email about it. Maybe some of the metro advertising budget could be redirected from that game to a genuine consultation on significant changes to city plan here. So we will support this item today, these items today, but await the results of that consultation and the community submissions to make a final judgement on supporting the changes or not at a later date. Clause E, which is the major amendment to city plan for the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan. Labour understands and supports the need to have a plan and build more housing to tackle the housing and homelessness crisis, dual crisis we face here in Brisbane. But unfortunately, this LMP administration is not up to the job of doing it properly. How can we be progressing a neighbourhood plan in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis when the LMP refuse to deliver a housing strategy they promised in 2019 and a homelessness strategy they voted for in May this year? The neighbourhood planning process is broken under this LMP administration. We saw that last week with the Sandgate Neighbourhood Plan, and we're seeing the same for the Nathan Salisbury and Maruka Plan this week. It was botched from the start, no negotiation or consultation with residents, just a one-size cookie cutter solution. Councillor Griffiths has been regularly meeting with residents and seeking their feedback. Now, this proactive approach saw 290 resident submissions, 1,150 pieces of feedback through the survey process at the draft strategy stage. And that was an unprecedented amount of feedback for a neighbourhood plan. Following this, 700 residents signed a petition asking council to restart that process, given how flawed it was. In Maruka, the response to 200 character homes being threatened prompted more than 350 people to turn up to a community meeting.
Please don't be interrupted, councillor Cassidy.
I didn't quite catch that mumble from the deputy mayor.
Please proceed.
So 350 people turned up to a community meeting, one I attended alongside councillor Griffiths. And that was a real show of people power. And at that meeting, residents moved the following motions, and they were supported unanimously at that community meeting. First, that Brisbane City Council protect all existing character homes under the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Draft Neighbourhood Plan area. Two, that residents want sensible and sustainable development that is genuinely shaped by residents' feedback. That's a pretty fair point, if you ask me. And number three, that Brisbane City Council commits to additional and upgraded service infrastructure, such as more well-lit green space, a library, more community spaces and connected and safe bikeways. As I said, we support more housing, but we want to do it smart. Get a housing strategy in place so we know exactly what and where the challenges are and how we work to solve them. Don't just let developers pick and choose where they want to develop for the biggest profit. People don't want what's left of Brisbane's suburban character to be demolished by this LMP administration. The draft plan puts at risk a huge amount of the suburban character, and it's not what the community wants.
Move for an extension.
One sec, sorry. Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Councillor Cook?
Move for an extension.
Councillor Strong? Moved by councillor Cook, seconded by councillor Strong. Did councillor Cassidy be granted an extension of time? Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
So the draft plan puts at risk a huge amount of that suburban character, and that's not what the community wants. That's what we've always been told for the last fourteen years of neighbourhood planning, or they say it was an award-winning process. It's to work with the community, apparently, to deliver a plan that the community is part of. But when you see all of this evidence, when you see the record numbers of submissions, you see mass community meetings, and you see all of those submissions and a petition with 700 residents signing it saying, this is not a process we were part of. We want a neighbourhood plan process to restart and for the community to genuinely be involved with. That's all the evidence you need to show that neighbourhood planning is broken here in Brisbane. There are over 2,000 individuals zoning changes to residential properties in the draft plan, which are all about increasing density. Low density to LMR, LMR to medium density. Some places that are character, TBC, traditional building character overlay, streets that'll see seven-story unit developments. The community's made it clear through those mass meetings, through record numbers of submissions, that they don't accept the LMP approach, which we have seen. They want to be part of the planning process that involves them and allows them to make decisions with council because they know these decisions will affect their suburbs for generations to come. But under the LMP, this decision's already been made. In the LMP party room, behind closed doors, with their so-called Better Suburbs Board, chaired by the former LMP federal member, Phil Morton, people start to form a view of this process, particularly in this neighbourhood plan area, that it's not open, it's not transparent, it's not bringing the community along with it. They feel like the decision's already been made before they even had a chance to be part of that. And when you see the number of submissions and the petitions and the survey responses on the draft strategy, and then you see no changes being made to the draft neighbourhood plan, in fact, all of those elements that people were most upset about being doubled down on by this administration, you can easily form a view alongside that community that the LMP are no longer listening. I don't know if they ever were, but they certainly aren't now. So there's no wonder that this community here and communities right around Brisbane are rejecting the planning approach of this LMP administration when it comes to their communities. And I'm sure, if they keep it up, the damage has probably already been done, but I'm sure they will keep it up for the next year or so, that the people of Brisbane will reject them come March 2024 as well.
Further debate? Councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on items D and E. There's some parts of the major amendments to city plan, package L, that I quite like and others that I'm a little concerned about. So if it comes to division on that, I'd probably abstain. But one thing I do really like about that amendment is the increase to deep planting minimums. This is something I've been banging on about in this chamber for many years now. And it's pleasing to see that we're almost at the point where this minimum is going to be increased from ten per cent to fifteen per cent. So for anyone listening at home who doesn't know, currently in big new developments, you're theoretically required, or developers are theoretically required to set aside ten per cent of site area for deep-planted trees. Deep-planted trees are those trees that are actually planted in the ground itself without underground car parks or concrete beneath them and without any building awnings or structures above them. There's a few problems we have with the current system. The first is that even the existing ten per cent site area threshold is often ignored. Many developers are allowed by this council to ignore that rule in the city plan. And so even though they're supposed to have ten per cent of their sites set aside as deep planting, they might only have three or four per cent, or they might count some giant pot plant or a balcony planter box as deep planting, and the council officers are just so eager to do whatever the development industry wants that they just approve the thing even though it doesn't comply. And this is a persistent frustration of mine, but at least I hope that by increasing the deep planting minimum to fifteen per cent and tightening up the definitions of what counts as deep planting, we'll see fewer of those loopholes and exemptions granted. The Greens' position for a while now has been that twenty per cent of site area in new developments should be set aside for deep planting. And we've brought motions to that effect in the chamber in the past. And I acknowledge that the Labour councillors have previously supported motions in favour of twenty-five per cent deep planting. And the Labour councillors have also supported twenty per cent deep planting via motions here in the chamber in the last few years. So I commend the Labour councillors for that. And it's nice to see that Labour, on this respect at least, is also concerned about ensuring there are more trees in new developments. Unfortunately, the Liberals are still just sticking with the fifteen per cent. And I think one of my deepest disappointments is that it was Mayor Quirk who reluctantly agreed to that fifteen per cent target, I think back in 2018. And coming out of the Future Blueprint process, the LMP said that they would introduce that requirement within, I think it was, six months. And I had hoped that by the end of 2018, we would have that increase in deep planting embedded in city plan. But instead, we're getting towards the end of 2022, and it still hasn't happened. So in that time, we've had dozens, if not hundreds, of major new developments approved under the old ten per cent deep planting. So we've missed out on a lot of opportunities to secure more land for trees in the inner city in particular. The reality, for those who aren't familiar, is that trees talk to each other. They communicate directly and share nutrients. And one of the ways they do that is via fungal mycelium networks in the soil. And they send those electronic signals to each other to alert each other to pests and predators and changes in the climate and changes in nutrient availability, et cetera. But trees are not able to communicate through their root networks and those fungal networks when they're in concrete planter boxes and when they're cut off from one another by built infrastructure. So although some councillors and some members of the public might look at a tree in a big planter box and say, well, look, it's still got plenty of room for its roots. It's just the same as having a tree planted in the ground. The difference is that trees, generally speaking, have evolved to grow and prosper in forests with complex, multi-layered ecosystems with complex, multi-layered ecosystems and different kinds of vegetation and multiple species supporting and contributing nutrients to each other through the soil. And so when you trap a tree in an individual planter box or concrete pot plant and it can't talk to other trees, its health is detrimentally affected. Even more to the point, though, the reason we have those deep planting requirements introduced in Brisbane is that during the last big drought period we had a bit over 10 years ago now, there were some developments that had had so-called deep-planting trees in concrete planter boxes or balcony gardens and what have you. And once the water restrictions came in, those trees were all dying because there wasn't enough water available to keep them nourished. Whereas if you have deep-planting trees in the ground, in the soil itself, at least in dry periods, if there are water restrictions in future, those trees have a better chance of surviving than the small saplings that some developers are putting into pot plants. So I'm very disappointed at how long it's taken, but I do think it's a small win for the environment and for better planning and development in the inner city that this threshold is being increased from 10% to 15%. But it really does need to go up to 20%. And I would suggest for single-dwelling and suburban sprawled-style developments, it should be 25% that if we're creating more suburban sprawl in the outer burbs, that we should at least be including some trees within those development plans as well. Turning to item E, I just wanted to put one, I mean, I've been quite critical of a lot of the forms of rezoning that this council has embarked upon in the last few years. And I wanted to highlight, and one of the main reasons, that I think the LMP's strategy is so flawed here. And to put the LMP's argument as strongly as you can, it's essentially if we rezone land for more development, more housing will be built. And if there's more housing available in a competitive free market, the prices will come down. But there's a few reasons that doesn't happen. And I've talked at length in the past about investment properties being left empty and speculative commoditisation of housing. But even at a much more basic level, if you think about what happens when land is rezoned for high-density development, the first thing that happens is that the land value increases. So if you've got an old warehouse or commercial block or even a large residential home block and that land is rezoned for medium-density or high-density development, the value of that land shoots up immediately. Now, that doesn't mean that new housing has been created. It doesn't mean that suddenly there's dozens of new dwellings in Maruka or Salisbury or where have you. All it means is that the zoning has changed and the land values have risen. Now, if land values have risen, guess what else happens? Housing becomes less affordable. So by rezoning for high-density development, the first and most immediate outcome is that land becomes more expensive and properties become more expensive. Now, the LMP at the moment has other policy levers available to ensure that development happens quicker and that rezoning actually leads to new affordable housing being created. But they're not using those levers. And so the LMP thinks it's creating new housing. The council administration thinks that it's encouraging more development in areas where more housing is needed. Actually, all it's doing is rezoning. It's just changing what is theoretically allowed to be developed on those sites in future. That's not the same thing. So all the council is really doing with plans like this one is putting upward pressure on property values. Rather than improving housing affordability, there's a strong case to be made that neighbourhood plans and changes like this actually make housing less affordable because they increase the potential future development, but they don't actually guarantee any supply of public housing or low-cost affordable housing for the people who need it most. So there's a complete disconnect between what the LMP think they're doing and what they're actually doing. And I think this is borne out, we see this on the ground in other areas that have experienced neighbourhood planning exercises in recent years. I've seen, for example, within the Dutton Park Fairfield neighbourhood plan, a lot of the Annerley Road corridor was rezoned for high-density development. There haven't actually been any new high-rises built along Annerley Road, even though those sites are now zoned for 10-storey development, which I think different people have different views about. But not a single new dwelling has been built as a result of all that upzoning. All that's happened is that the land values in that entire neighbourhood of Woolen Gabbah and Dutton Park have shot up. So the LMP, through that neighbourhood planning process, increased land values but didn't create any more housing for people on low incomes. And we see that pattern repeated across the city, where you can rezone till the cows come home, but it doesn't actually put more roofs over people's heads. So I think the LMP is completely barking up the wrong tree here. There are many other concerns I have with this neighbourhood planning process. And I think councillor Cassidy was right to articulate concerns about lack of consultation, about exactly where density is proposed to go. I have concerns about flooding, not just on the floodplain itself, but if you introduce more impervious services and concrete further up the hills, that causes more water to wash down onto the lower line sites and increases flood risk there as well. So there are many other concerns with this neighbourhood plan. But at a basic point, let's drop the charade and stop pretending that this is about increasing the supply of affordable housing. It's just about increasing property developer profits.
Further debate? councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on the three items C, D and E. Firstly, with respect to the minor and administrative amendments, I'll just say that I think it's somewhat knee-jerk reaction from the state government with respect to the granny flat issue. I think, I know there's a range of views. We have a big problem with housing, housing affordability and so forth. But the decision to allow non-related people to live in a structure that's probably not quite of a standard required for a proper house, I think is number one problematic. Two, there's going to create parking problems for a lot of people, which is also really problematic. And three, the noise issues that come from having a granny flat in someone's backyard adjoining residential houses and having a second family. I understand the need for more housing and I think there are good solutions that haven't been considered. But I don't think that a blanket widespread use of granny flats without pretty much any control is the right way to go. It is disappointing to see the council just roll over and implement this and other changes so quickly. I understand state legislation overrides ours, but there are other ways that council can implement restrictions. And I think this is incredibly problematic. And the noise issues and traffic issues that will come from this will be problematic. With respect to Package L, the major amendment, 20, 21, three years, good job, good job. I mean, the LMP started the process of amending City Plan three years ago, three years. And basically, we're still not even up to the public consultation phase at this point. The gap between what Brisbane City Council says it's going to do and what it actually does is phenomenal. Let me take, for example, deep planting. You know, all of this is pointless. It is all pointless because council will not defend deep-planting requirements in its approvals process or its appeals process. It just will not do it. It allows developers to get away with a lack of deep planting in almost every development that I see, and it is hugely problematic. That is compounded by the fact that City Plan policy says that there should be a difference between the open space, private open space, communal open space and deep-planting areas. But essentially, council allows these to be combined because it will not dispute them in the Planning and Environment Court. So fundamentally, council's three years late to the party to make these changes. And the problem is, in practice, the planning team won't defend the clear policy intention that is in City Plan. The other fundamental problem, of course, is one that I've raised in this chamber many times and moved multiple motions on, might be time to do it again, which is that all pre-1946 houses should be mapped within the Traditional Building Character Overlay Code. At the moment, council picks and chooses winners. And unfortunately, we're still seeing really stunning homes built in the 1800s being carried away on trucks in the middle of the night because they're not protected in the overlay. And that is because this administration refuses to protect them all. And that is putting them at risk. The idea that somehow these planning changes are going to help protect character streetscapes is just laughable. Council has improved buildings that look like barns in my area in what is traditional character building overlay. In Annerley, rooftop terraces in traditional building character overlay areas where, you know, the roof line is supposed to reflect pre-46 homes. This council does not even try. It does not even try. And the problem is, the officers are not doing their bit to push back against bad development. And that is what we are seeing. And the reason we are seeing bad development is because this LMP administration forced through City Plan 2014, and I was here and probably, you know, only a handful of other councillors now, but that was a week-long debate. Yeah, thank you, Peter. Thank you, councillor Cumming. It was a week-long debate where the LMP pushed through exactly what they wanted, where there were huge problems that were identified at that time, like code bombing, which has clearly been the case. Eight years on, we can see how that's, you know, councillor Simmons, who was the one-term wonder in the federal parliament, I mean, he's the complete victim of bad planning and he oversaw it. I mean, it's just going to wash away some of these LMP councillors. And the Lord Mayor stands up here and tries to claim, week after week, if we disagree with him about zoning in City Plan, that we're opposed to all houses. Now, that's just fundamentally untrue. It is just a lie. There's no other way to describe it. It is a fundamental misrepresentation of what the planning scheme does for the Lord Mayor to make those statements as he does over and over again. And now, of course, we know that if we ask for it to be withdrawn, it's going to be withdrawn and then it's going to be stricken from the record. So how much fun are we going to have with this policy that the LMP's brought in today? I mean, it's just crazy what you guys are doing today. But the problem is, this council is not serious about protecting character streetscapes. I am seeing poor, poor decisions around protecting character streets in my ward every single day. Rendered roof lines are not character materials. Character materials are tin and timber. And occasionally, there can be stucco in different parts of the city, and there are other parts of the city with different types of character. But in my area, rendered brickwork and blueboard is not character materials. So I just want to put on the record that this administration is fundamentally getting planning in this city wrong. The Lord Mayor has publicly lied about my position during the budget earlier in the year by claiming that I oppose all development. It's just absolutely untrue. In fact, I went back and checked. And essentially, where houses are being brought forward in character areas where I've raised issues around their design, I've said very clearly, I support the house, but it's the design issues that need to be addressed to reflect the character code. And the big problem, of course, is that this Lord Mayor stands up in here and professes that by disagreeing with him, we are opposed to all development. I mean, that's like a toddler's argument about what should be happening. I mean, is the Lord Mayor that dim that he does not understand that disagreeing with him does not mean we are opposed to all houses? It means we don't agree with the policy and the policy settings and the big-picture zoning decisions that he's made. He's got it wrong. He's got it wrong. And his way is not the only way. And the fact is that the Lord Mayor has failed to listen to me and my community on planning issues when he was deputy mayor and as long as I've been here. And it's so disappointing to see. So, you know, sadly, I think the LMP will go out again and proclaim that they are the great saviors of planning in the city. But really, they're not. We're seeing poor development. It's unfortunately now entrenched in this city, entrenched. I'd like to know the last time that an impact-assessable DA came up here to counsel for decision. You know, over the most recent years, the LMP keep bringing up code-assessable developments for debate in the chamber. I mean, it used to be the most controversial developments came up to this council for an open and genuine debate about what should happen. I mean, the last time that would have happened would have been a long time ago. And there are some very problematic, impact-assessable, generally inappropriate developments still going through. But the LMP are letting them roll through. So this LMP administration has to go. One of the two fundamental problems, or three fundamental problems they have, is their failure. Failure to reflect the community's expectations on planning. They stand up and blame the state government when really this council should be looking at creative ways to progress and protect this city's character, and it's not done that. It's disappointing to see that yet again, the LMP is blaming others, trying to blame me and other councillors and the state government when for the past decade, every planning mistake has been one of their own making.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming?
I'll be brief, Mr. Chair, just in relation to item D. There's a few things that are already happening under the current City Plan and I just think that the administration needs to take them into account in considering amendments. The modern rooming accommodation, which I call them five-in-ones, which are allowed in low-density areas on 405 square metre blocks, they come as quite a shock to people living next door, the fact that something like that can build in the middle of their residential street. And they often mean that obviously there's five extra cars. Where there was one house before, there's five cars around the area. And of course, human nature being where it is, you know, over the weekend, there might be 10 cars there, so, and no one's going to enforce that. My recollection, I can't recall that's being debated seriously in the City Plan 2014. I can't recall it being debated at all. The council had fact sheets on major changes being made to the City Plan at the time, and that wasn't one of them. So anyhow, but I don't know, other residents, I think I've had four of the five-in-ones built in Wintermanly Ward. The other development that needs dealing with is what I call dual-income properties because that's what the builder that marketed them was marketing them as, which effectively means duplexes have been built. They've been built quite extensively in the Wintermanly Ward. Again, low-density residential areas and 405 square metre blocks. My last count, which is a while ago now, I gave up after the administration refused to do anything. There was 75 of them had been built around Wintermanly. They weren't granny flats. They didn't attempt in any way, shape or form to comply with the granny flat requirements for areas of land or, you know, a relative living in the house. They were, it looked like one house, but when you looked at them closer, there was actually two entrances. You'd go up the front steps or down to the side entrance and they were two quite separate units within the one block. Again, as I said, low-density, 405 square metres. And again, that meant what was otherwise one house next door meant it was a house with probably two adult families and, you know, five or six potentially cars on the street as well. As I said, no attempt to be relatives who are living there. And it did have some advantages for the investors and for the builder. I'm sure the builder did well out of it. The investors were getting two lots of rent each week and that meant they paid off their house much quicker. And anyhow, but again, that type of development either should be made legal or it should be illegal and enforced as being illegal, sort of thing. It shouldn't be allowed to be done effectively illegally and then nothing done about it because that invites contempt of the city planning process and the cars process. And the other thing I thought of as well, you know, what's a publication that goes all around the city if we're having changes to the City Plan? Major changes that could publicise what's being done and say to people, do you want, you know, a house with five units next door to you? Or do you know that that's possible in Brisbane? Well, that could be done when they're living in Brisbane. Could be put in living in Brisbane. Could devote one to City Plan changes, put it out around the whole city and invite people to have their say on what they think should happen with these changes. So that's my suggestion for how to publicise any changes proposed. Thank you.
Further debate? councillor Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on items C, D and E. And could I also take all those items, serial item, for vote? Just quickly, item C, which is the minor amendment. This has been touched upon already. This has been driven by changes by the state government with regards to secondary dwellings. In September, the state government removed limitations on the constraints that previously existed around secondary dwellings. And in particular, what this means, and particularly in the context of City Plan, is that there's no longer a requirement that the residents or the tenants within the secondary dwelling are related to those in the principal house. And this will apply to dual occupancy dwelling houses, multiple dwellings, secondary dwellings and non-residential workforce and rural worker accommodation. So it's very much now about creating an environment that allows the rental of those secondary dwellings to a non-relative. There are an additional few items there in minor L that are of an administrative nature, tidying up zoning and overlay maps. Moving on to major L, this is a significant package and certainly it comes off the back of Brisbane Future Blueprint. And in particular, there are three actions from the blueprint that are captured by this particular amendment. And one of them is action one, which is to mandate best-practice design that fits surroundings and meets community standards. Action three, to increase the required areas for tree planting and deep landscaping and new development. Action six, preserving our city's Queenslander and other traditional designs. So the city planning team has been working for quite some time on all of these particular actions and in the context of secondary dwellings and rooming accommodation, ensuring that we can get the best possible outcomes with those particular housing topologies. Previously, there was quite limited design criteria. And what we're trying to do is bring in improved design criteria to improve the outcomes that we're receiving. bring in improved design criteria to improve the outcomes that we're receiving with those particular types of accommodation. And I only have to reflect on a two-storey shipping container, secondary dwelling in my ward, to acknowledge the importance of trying to get secondary dwellings right. And in the context of this amendment, secondary dwellings where you can have a detached two-story dwelling in the backyard will not be permitted anymore. They have to be single-story to a maximum height. They can't be more than 10% of the site area, so they will be scaled appropriately to the site. Obviously, not every site will support a granny flat of any type, but certainly, when we're looking at these secondary dwellings, they have to meet design criteria and not reflect the kind of size and height that we've seen with some pretty bad outcomes around the city. So, you know, at the end of the day, we need to be adaptable, we need to be responsive to the housing challenge, but we need to do it in a way that allows for different types of housing solution, but in a way that doesn't create unfortunate outcomes across the city, if you like. In addition to these particular changes, we've touched upon it earlier in the meeting, is the movement from 10% to 15% in deep planting on new developments. You know, there's a recognition here that sites have challenges, that, you know, there are constraints with different sites, but at the end of the day, we're trying to achieve an outcome. We're also going to continue to push facade planting, rooftop planting. This is really just about the ground domain, but certainly, our objective is to get more, healthier, bigger trees within new developments. And obviously, that's for the benefit of not only the tenants, but the community at large. The, what else is in this amendment? Look, I think we've touched upon a lot of it in the debate already. There are some good examples of some of the tree planting solutions in Winham Centre, actually. The Winham Centre Community Car Park's got a good outcome there in terms of structural soil self-planting. But at the end of the day, major L is about three things. It's supporting improved design outcomes for small-lot dwelling houses, secondary dwellings, self-contained residences and rooming accommodation. It supports the retention of traditional character buildings and traditional character streetscapes, and it increases the area required for deep planting. Now, moving on to item E, the Nathan Salisbury Maruka Neighbourhood Plan. This kicked off in August 2019, I think, when councillor Adams was the chair. It's had a lengthy process of consultation and engagement to date, and we're now in a position where we have a draft neighbourhood plan. The plan is designed around optimising a number of key sites in the Nathan Salisbury Maruka area, particularly the Maruka Magic Mile, which presents as a great opportunity for regeneration with a key focus on housing, job creation and economic activity. The location is extremely well-located with respect to the Maruka Cross River Rail Station. It also provides an opportunity for a very significant uplift in not only housing but economic activity. I mean, notwithstanding, you know, there are people who love their motor vehicles, the reality is that a motor yard takes up a lot of land, and there isn't a lot of employment associated with it, or anything else for that matter. So from here, we will be taking this neighbourhood plan through the following process. So we'll be going to public meetings and information sessions, there'll be letters to property owners and residents, there'll be signs distributed across the area, there'll be email and webpage updates, there'll be a public notice in the courier mail and opportunities for people to provide submissions via city plan online. So, you know, at the moment, we have a real opportunity here to create a great outcome for this study area. Unfortunately, to date, the local councillor has been happy to misrepresent what's being intended in this area. I think that if the residents knew what the intent is, they'd be much more comfortable with where this is heading. You know, we do recognise that there are, and there has been, a forensic review of character housing in the study area. There are properties with a character zoning that aren't character in nature, there are other properties that are so dilapidated and they're sitting within an LMR streetscape. So there are quite a number of houses where the case to remove, for example, a character zoning is very, very strong. But the same token, we've identified a lot of houses that deserve character listing. So as I said, it's been a real forensic approach to the houses on a case-by-case basis. Residents will have an opportunity through the next phase of consultation to provide feedback on this. So, you know, I guess my comments would be that I hope councillor Griffith remains engaged in the process, but in a very positive way and reflects the benefits, reflects the benefits, no, but in a positive and honest way, to ensure that, you know, the benefits that will accrue to the community are clear. I think on item E, look, I acknowledge some of the points that councillor Sri made, but at the end of the day, council provides latent supply through the city planning process. We provide latent supply via the Development Service DA approval process. Council is not a builder or a developer. And so there are a lot of factors, a lot of factors that...
Point of order, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Will the chair take a question?
None at the moment, no.
No, councillor Sri Ranganathan.
Yeah, at the end of the day, there are a lot of factors that drive into the provision and completion of housing. So, you know, housing starts at one end from sort of, you know, a concept position and to actual delivery. And council doesn't have all the levers to make this happen. You know, there are a lot of market forces at play here, and, you know, council at the end of the day is doing the piece we need to do to ensure that the potential for housing is provided. Mr Chair, at that point, I think I'll leave further debate to the chamber, if there is any, but certainly, I commend all three items to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further debate? No further debate? I'll now put each item. We'll start with item C. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Sri. Eyes to my left, no's to my, sorry, eyes to my right, no's to my left. Please ring the bells. Ordinarily, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favour, one against and one abstention.
The ayes have it. We will now move to item D. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division moved by councillor Johnston and councillor Sri Ranganathan. Eyes to my right, no's to my left. Please ring the bells. Ordinarily, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour, zero against and two abstentions.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we will now move to item E. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Moved by councillor Cook and councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, no's to my left. Please ring the bells. Ordinarily, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and five against.
The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of November 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting, dated Tuesday, 29th of November 2022, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week, we had a presentation on Inner Spark. Many of you here will remember the ideas Fiesta that took place in 2013 that led to the expansion of ideas like How Smith Wolves, Queen's Plaza, Albert Street, Greenspan and our Green Bridges Programme. So we really have got a track record of turning big ideas into reality and changing the face of Brisbane forever. So we know right now, our creative economy take is taking off, our night-time presence is becoming more vibrant and exciting, and Inner Spark is the next iteration of that making sure that the community can have their say on the future, on the inner city, as we look ahead for the next 10 years. The engagement campaign that's been run over the last six months has been a huge success, generating more than 1,300 unique ideas from the community, reaching close to 700,000 people on social media, with over 30,000 votes cast in the ideas put forward. So we've got a lot to think about going forward, to digest and filter these ideas into practical planning solutions and projects that will shape the future of Brisbane's inner city. It is a very exciting period in our city's history right now, and it's time to think big, be bold and build a future that will make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today, and I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there any debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of November 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of November 2022, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chair. Chair, for our final presentation of the year, the Transport Committee received an update on the Active School Travel Programme. We know that AST is one of council's behaviour change programmes to create a more active and green at Brisbane. One in four car trips during the morning peak are for school travel. And I always like to say, Mr Chair, that what we're aiming for is school holiday traffic all year round, and AST has a big role to play in achieving that goal. It benefits students, it benefits parents, it benefits carers and it benefits teachers by offering Brisbane primary schools a range of free resources, tools and incentives to leave the car at home and actively travel to school. And in the last three years, the programme has reduced single-car journeys and achieved a 19% increase in families travelling by foot, bike, scooter, public transport and car sharing. As we know, Chair, 2022 has been a difficult year, and schools in the AST programme were affected by COVID-19 and the February floods. But despite these challenges, there were still 19,000 students across 37 schools who took part in the programme. And just a few weeks ago, we celebrated the Active School Travel Awards, celebrated our schools' outstanding achievements and welcomed new schools for 2023. We had a number of councillors who were here in the chamber, including the deputy mayor who was on hand to hand out some of the awards. Special congratulations go to Craig's Lee State School in councillor Hammond's ward. Mr Chair took out the 2022 Active School Travel School of the Year, increasing their active travel from 30% to 48%, which is a very, very good result. Testimonials emphasised how the participating schools are, quote, "very impressed with the support given to us by the council to implement AST", unquote, and, quote, "the number of students riding to school is amazing and our bike and scooter racks are full every day", unquote. So, Chair, my thanks to the wonderful Active School Travel team for all the great work that they do in supporting that programme each and every year, and this council will continue to be a massive supporter of Active School Travel, which, by the way, we introduced, Liberals introduced, and we will continue to support. And next year, we will be introducing KINDI Active Travel with the acronym CAT, K-A-T. So that will be a first for the programme, and something I'm very much looking forward to helping to implement. Mr Chair, being the last council meeting of the year, I'd also like to take some time to reflect on what has been a massive year for milestones within the transport portfolio. We know this year was shaped early on by the devastating February floods and the impact it had on our transport networks. We have worked very hard to restore as much of our network as possible. Proud to say we've already reopened 16 ferry terminals, we've cleared over 170 kilometres worth of our bikeway network, tonnes and tonnes of debris, and we've completed several restoration projects in and around Kedram Brook, which was our worst-hit bikeway. But even though much of our efforts have focused on building Brisbane back after the flood, we've also made great strides on other transport projects as well. Trial of the Citylink Cycleway was completed successfully with new infrastructure along Victoria Bridge, Elizabeth Street and Edward Street. Residents told us that Citylink made them feel safe when walking, cycling or scooting in the city, and we saw infrastructure used for commuting, but also local access to CBD businesses. We also continued our base site and Safe Night precinct trials, both of which helped us to meet a milestone of eight million e-mobility trips taken in Brisbane since Lime started in 2018. And just a few weeks ago, we launched another set of trials, the first and last mile trials, providing e-scooters and e-bikes the ability to commute to and from public transport hubs. And speaking of public transport, Deputy Chair, I can't wrap up 2022 without mentioning some of the milestones we've achieved on Brisbane Metro this year. Our metro depot at Roche Star, which will be Australia's largest electric bus depot, has started taking shape with the beginning of structural steelworks. Preparatory works on Adelaide Street Tunnel Portal are now complete, and we will start tunneling underground from North Key to King George Square. Construction has continued on the upgraded station at the Cultural Centre, and we also have opened work sites at Buranda and UQ Lake stations. And of course, one of the biggest milestones of the year was the arrival of our very impressive Pilot Metro, which people had the chance to visit at the ECA. We had tens of thousands of Brisbane residents through that vehicle, and I think they could see that the delivery really matches our rhetoric. That vehicle is a very impressive piece of engineering, Chair, and we look forward to starting to receive the remaining 59 vehicles through next year. We also saw the signing of the South East Queensland City Deal, which has made the metro project even bigger and better with the addition of the Wollongawa Station, supported by both federal and state governments, Mr Chair, which means Metro is the only public transport project in the entire city that is supported by all three levels of government. As part of our preparation works for Metro, we also launched consultation on Brisbane's new bus network, the biggest bus review our city has seen in over a decade. There's still just a week for residents to have their say on the proposed changes before we close the survey down on the 14th of December. We also submitted the business case for the Gold City Glider. We completed the trial of four electric buses on the Gold City Glider. We launched City Cat 26, our latest generation City Cat, and the first with a shade sail on the top deck. And what about those Green Bridges, Deputy Chair? Earlier this year, Infrastructure Australia added our Green Bridge programme to their priority list, identifying them as nationally significant infrastructure. The city deal also committed federal government funding to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, which has already made very impressive progress this year, Chair. Works were paused with the marine equipment... Works were paused with the marine equipment while we helped the state government with their drift restaurant. But since then, piling has been full steam ahead on the bridge's seven piers, and it's very exciting to see work commence on the bridge deck next year, and we can start to see that connection between Kangaroo Point and the CBD start to take shape. Mid-year, of course, we also awarded construction contract for the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, and we commenced work on that project. And this bridge will be the fitting end to the ever-popular Laura's Bonnie River Walk. We also commenced piling work there on the bridge supports and the piers for the Laura's Bonnie River Walk extension. Mister Chair, there's only a few weeks of 2022 left, and we're not quite finished yet. Before Christmas, we will see another three ferry terminals return to service Maritime Museum, Milton, and UQ St Lucia. We'll launch another generation for Citycat, that'll hit the water in just over a week, and we'll christen Citycat twenty-seven. And I know we moved a motion of appreciation earlier, Mister Chair, but I'd like to finish by thanking all of the officers that I've had the absolute privilege to work with in Brisbane Infrastructure and Transport for Brisbane in 2022, Chair. Their dedication to improving this beautiful city is unquestionable, and I'm just so pleased to have gotten out there and to have met so many of them through this year. It has been a real inspiration to see their work. Our city is undoubtedly better connected and better serviced, thanks to the Shrinna Council's efforts and our record investment in public transport and green transport. So, with those few words, thank you very much, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Any debate?
Just a quick reminder that-
Councillor Sri Ranganath.
Quick reminder that if we keep our comments concise, we might get out of here by six PM.
We'll return to the motion debate. Is there any more debate on this report? No? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee.
Mister Chair- Point of order, Mister Chair.
Oh, point of order, councillor Cook.
Can I just ask that items B, C, and D just be taken separately for voting only?
Can I move it, and then councillor Cook can jump up?
Sure.
We'll do that. Councillor Wines, thank you.
Let me move it, and then we'll do that. And it's cool, but, all right. Mister Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of November, 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of November, 2022 be adopted. Councillor Cook.
Thank you. Can I ask that items B, C, and D be taken separately for voting only?
For voting. Thank you. Oh, councillor, the clerks have just asked about clarify, would you like them on block as B, C, and D? Yes. Thank you. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mister Chair. Would you mind just resetting my, I'm at seven forty-five on my clock, if you wouldn't just wind something back to zero for me? Thank you. So, as normally do I, I intend to take all ten minutes. No, in all seriousness, no, I won't be. But let me just begin by saying what an honour it's been to chair the Infrastructure Committee this year. Thank you so much to all of my committee members, yourself, Mister Chair, councillor Hammond, councillor Hutton, councillor Strunk, and councillor Griffiths. So, I hope that people found it informative and meaningful. That's one of the things I've tried to do in this role, is committee meetings can vary in what's presented, and I've tried to make it interesting, informative, and inclusive, and I hope people have felt that, the committee members have felt that, including trips up the Story Bridge. And next year, we'll do a few, we might even do other excursions. You never know, you never know. There was a question, which drain are we going to visit? There's some pretty good ones. There's some pretty good ones. And we may well see the ancient drains under the city, but that's for another day. That's for another day. Can I thank my committee members in all sincerity for their conduct of the meetings, and I hope, once again, I hope that it was a good experience for all of them. Can I thank the clerks who attended to us through those meetings? Can I also thank a whole range of people who work in the Brisbane Infrastructure area? Scott Stewart and his team, Alan Evans and his team, Tanya Orr and her team, the wider TPO group, Deb, Jamie Miles, Anthony, Paul in Adelaide, Joe Bannon and his team, and the team over at CPO, Dean, Luke, Marney, Rowan, Michelle, Stacey, Emma, Ashok, and many, many others. Can I also recognise Jane Carroll, who is my PA in the city, who received her fifteen years of service to council award today? So, congratulations to Jane and her ongoing commitment to this organisation and to this council. Can I also recognise Dominic and Georgia and Steve, who worked with me in the city this last twelve months as well? I really appreciate all of their efforts. Thank you to them. Can I also take a moment just to reflect upon the presentation last week? It was a presentation discussing two intersection upgrades, the Inogomirand intersection, the Kelvin Grove Road and Blamey Street intersection. Why were they together? It speaks to a corridor approach to try and get traffic moving safer and more efficiently through those corridors. That's coupled with an expansion of the Clearway and changes to parking that have saved motorists going home in particular minutes off their trip, so whole minutes each and every day. So, this is, as I say, it works, smaller projects working together to save the traffic, the network, and to make sure that it keeps moving quickly and efficiently. We want a safe and efficient road network, getting people home sooner and safer. There were four petitions on a range of issues, yellow lines, traffic calming, more traffic calming, and the ongoing work at O'Keefe Street at the border of Stones Corner and Woolongava to ensure that we have ongoing improvements to safety in that area. I look forward to comments from other councillors in the report.
Thank you. Councillor Wines, further debate? No further debate? I'll now put the items. Firstly, we'll go with item A. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We'll then move to item E. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to items B, C, and D together. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division moved by councillor Cook and by councillor Cumming. Ayes to the right, noes to the left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Ordinarily, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the results.
Mister Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and four against.
The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 29th of November, 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Hammond, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 29th of November, 2022 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to take the opportunity to thank my fellow committee members for their support during committee this year. We had plenty of, you know, interesting opportunities to discuss issues related to planning and some of the technicalities related to planning, and certainly, you know, the debate and the engagement within committee was positive. I'd also like to yet again thank the council officers in City Planning and Development Services who've done a sterling job this year. We've got a massive amount of work on, not only in the city planning space, but also in the Development Services team. So, I'm very appreciative of the effort they put in, and they produce very high-quality work, often without a lot of resource to support it. I'd also like to thank Tony and Vanessa in my office, who've, you know, particularly in recent times, have really had to buckle down. Moving to the report, there was, first of all, there was a presentation on a DA at a hundred and forty Wadeville Street at Heathwood. Now, this was a particularly interesting development because it provides an opportunity for fifty-two new housing lots to come onto the market. And given the environment in which we're operating with a housing challenge, it's great to see some additional housing lots potentially coming to market in the not-too-distant future. The blocks themselves have an array of different sizes. There's about thirty-eight that are in the smaller lot category, and then there's fourteen standard lots, so there are some options there. The opportunity here is to obviously provide additional housing in a location that's well-located with respect to services, and in particular, in this case, to some bus stops. Moving on to item B, we had a petition requesting the inclusion of green infrastructure planning within the urban neighbourhoods to enhance biodiversity, and this particularly related to the Spring Hill area. The petition response, well, there were seventeen signatures on the petition. The petition response was supported by the local councillor. Item C, another petition, objected to a proposed development at thirty-two McLean Street at Brighton. The petition contained seven hundred and fourteen signatures. There did appear to be a significant amount of misinformation that underpinned the petition in the first instance. Unfortunately, the petitioners had an incorrect view of some of the land around this particular site. They had a view that it was bushland and that it was wetland, but in fact, it was state road reserve. And ultimately, the application came in as a code assessable application and was approved by council's delegate on the seventh of October. And as I noted, that key issue or key point of concern was the way that the state road reserve was treated. The next item was petition D, or item D, was a petition objecting to the height of a development at eighty-nine Bay Terrace down in Winham. Councillor Cumming knows this one quite well. So, there was a couple of petitions that objected to the height of the development. One petition contained three hundred and twenty-eight signatures, the other contained two hundred and forty-two. And, you know, the key issue here was really the scale and the height of the development. The development, ninety-two point four metres, bit of a sore thumb potentially down your way, councillor Cumming. But anyway, the response was provided to the petitioners. Councillor Cumming supported the recommendation. The height of me was another petition on the same property, eighty-nine Bay Terrace, Winham. And there was two signatures, I think, supporting this, sorry, no, forty signatures in support of the application. Councillor Cumming once again supported the recommendation, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen, further debate. Councillor Cumming.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to speak in relation to items D and E, but firstly, I'd like to say that item E be dealt with as a serial item for voting purposes. Yeah, as the Chair said, the matter involves a development application in relation to an old shopping centre site plus some other land. It's actually, the other land is the developer purchased off the Brisbane City Council only a couple of years ago. It was land that council had acquired as part of the process when council bought the old Winham Central School and turned it into a community centre. And the land is situated in the medium-density area, maximum of eight stories. Or I think, it seems to be getting away with nine these days, but that's with a recreational area on top. And, but the application, which has been lodged with council, is for twenty-seven stories, so three times as high as is allowed, and three times as high as is allowed on that extra block of land. So, if council were to approve this, the developer would make a massive capital gain, I would have thought, in no time at all, which is what's intended. In my view, it's a bit of a try-on of council and of myself, and it's something where they'd probably be prepared to negotiate something lower. But I've said to them, look, if you think you can convince the general public that this is a, anything anywhere near this height is a worthy development, and we go through the neighbourhood planning process, change the neighbourhood plan, then go ahead with it. That process would take a couple of years, but if that was done, then we would be sure what the general public believed in. Now, I supported the development of Winham Central with the five and eight-story buildings, and there's been, I think, so far, there's been about nine five-story buildings and three eight-story buildings built in Winham Central. And the area is going ahead well. There's new developments occurring there, new restaurants opening, the new Japanese restaurant opened recently, a Thai restaurant moved from New Farm to Winham for Better Days, you know? And councillor Howard was heartbroken, apparently it was her favourite restaurant, and she lost it to Winham. But anyhow, that's all right, that's all right. And, but the only thing about the, I suppose, the petition response plays it straight down the line in terms of saying, you know, we've got to go through the assessment process, but I think they could have been a bit stronger because to give any sort of hint that council was likely to approve, seriously consider, and approving such a development, twenty-seven stories, was, I think, it would have been a bit misleading to the general public. And of course, the number of people who signed the petition in favour of the twenty-seven stories was only forty, and twenty-three lived in Winham Manly or later, and sixteen lived in other parts of Brisbane. And so, it's a pretty lukewarm and pathetic response. And I didn't campaign very hard, but on the, those against was some three hundred and twenty-eight signatures on one and two forty-two on the other. Four hundred and eighty lived in Winham Manly or later, seventy-three in other parts of Brisbane, and seventeen outside the city of Brisbane. So, much larger numbers in favour of knocking back the application than in favour of it. And I support, and I think that's representative of what the general public thinks, and therefore, I'm, I think the reason I objected to the the response to item E was I thought it was a bit lukewarm, and that the administration could have been a bit stronger in saying, you know, this will be not- What I suggested in my response was that the council should say, look, the council was looking at a speedy refusal of the application, which is what it deserves. Subsequently, the developers actually pulled the consideration of the application out for the time being, as I think they're allowed to do these days. But I'm still strongly of the view that the application should be refused and refused as soon as possible by the council. Thank you.
Is there any further debate? No further debate, councillor Allen? No? I'll now put items A, B, C, and D. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I'll now put item E. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division. Division.
Division moved by councillor Cumming and councillor Cook. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Please ring the bells. Orderly, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being eighteen in favour and four against.
The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twenty-nine November, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded. Moved by Councillor Davis, seconded by Councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-nine November, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Before I go to the committee report, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our news officers in what was quite a difficult year. Firstly, thank you to David Chick, the Divisional Manager of CPAS, and to Brad Wilson, our news branch manager. I'd also like to acknowledge Elizabeth Sisson, Lachlan Carkeet, and Wade Fitzgerald. Elizabeth stepped up for several months this year as acting branch manager, and I just want to thank her for her commitment and professionalism in that role. I think that the committee would agree that Lachlan Carkeet has provided both informative and entertaining presentations this year, and I look forward to seeing presentations from Lachlan in two thousand and twenty-three. But a big thank you to all the officers in the news branch. Thank you for your knowledge, thank you for your enthusiasm, and thank you for your support. It really has been a great pleasure working with such a passionate team. To the clerks, what would we do without you on Tuesday? Thank you very much for the work that you do. And to my EPS team of Tanya, Ethan, and to Steve, along with my ward office team of Zach and Chris, I just want to thank them for everything that they do for our city to make it Brizbetter. Mr. Chair, last week's committee presentation was on shade trees at bus stops in a city like Brisbane. Shelter at bus stops is important, not just for passenger comfort, but also for protecting passengers from exposure to UV radiation, heat stress, and risk of skin cancer. Research is even suggesting that providing trees may make waiting for the bus feel shorter, with passengers underestimating the waiting time at bus stops with lots of trees. We know from Brisbane's future blueprint that residents are very supportive of having more shade trees at bus stops, and so far, we've assessed around fifteen hundred bus stops and planted more than eight hundred trees selected to provide maximum shade and benefit. Because every bus stop is different, we assess each one to ensure that we're planting the right species for the bus stop's orientation, exposure, and character. And this is just the beginning. We've already identified a further five hundred and twenty-six trees to be planted, and I'm looking forward to seeing greener, shadier bus stops next year. Deputy Chair, item B was a park naming, which was a formal naming of the parcel of land at four forty-nine A Kingsford Smith Drive, Hamilton, as Pensacola Convoy Place. The submission was supported by the committee, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Councillor Davis. Further debate? Councillor McLaughlin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I'd just rise briefly to speak on item B, and thank the news branch team for getting this petition into this, into this chamber today, so that we could proceed quickly to an event on the twenty-second of December this year, which will mark eighty-one years since the Pensacola Convoy sailed into the safe harbour of Brisbane after a perilous journey across the Pacific after the bombing of Pearl Harbour and the attack on Manila. That the Pensacola, US Pensacola, supporting supply ships that had been destined for Manila had to divert, required a change of tactics clearly, and they found safe harbour here in Brisbane eighty-one years ago. And it marked the beginning, effectively, of the Australian-US military alliance, which then went on to prosecute the war in the Pacific. So a great, a great opportunity to mark a special moment in Australian history, in Australian-US relationships, and we'll be having a presentation on this on the twenty-second of December at the new Pensacola Convoy Place at Brettsworf, and all are invited to attend if they would like. I'd like to thank especially the news branch for their quick turnaround of this. It was in the Transport Committee last week, where the petition first went to, and it quickly came back through to the, to the news team, so it could be classified as a park renaming. I'd also like to thank the Tawong Sign Shop for getting the sign ready to go on the twenty-second of December, and especially thank my ward staff, Julie Stimson in particular, and Catherine, for putting together the event in quick time, given that this has only just gone through the committee last week and into council today, and we're ready to go with the, with the event on the twenty-second of December. And I'm looking forward to welcoming anybody who'd like to attend and to recognising this important moment in Australian history. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debates? Councillor Davis? No? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Toomey, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of November, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted.
Moved by Councillor Toomey, seconded by Councillor Landis, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-nine November, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted. Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Before I go to the report, I would like to extend, Councillor Marks, thanks to the committee members for their service this year. We have had quite a number of varied presentations, all of them very entertaining and informative. Can I also put on the record, Councillor Marks, thanks to her staff, Kate, Stephanie, and Laurel, for their service this year? And again, as I mentioned before, they have done outstanding work for the city. I would also like to extend, Councillor Marks, thanks to the City Standards team, who have done outstanding work this year, not only in February, but further on through the year to get our city ready for Christmas, and also the Cars offices as well. And I would like to wish them all a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and a safe festive season, on behalf of Councillor Marks. Moving on to the committee report, Mr. Deputy Chair, last week, we had a presentation on Mulgumpan Partnership and Sustainability. The feature of the report was the Tangaluma Puma, or the capture, I should say, of the Tangaluma Puma. This little beastie came in just under seven kilos, and I'm well-informed that this particular little beastie is possibly twice the weight of the chamber's most famous cats, Keith and Basil, combined. But the Tangaluma Panther is no longer with us, and it's interesting to note that the, that the officers actually recorded the contents of the Tangaluma Puma, and it had caught a crow, and I believe that captured Councillor Cumming's interest during the report. It's pretty hard to catch a crow, I think he mentioned in that one. Also, the report went on to mention a number of activities that council is undertaking with the residents on Mulgumpan, and how that partnership is bearing fruit as we move forward to a sustainable future, and I will leave the rest of debate to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? I put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of November, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councillor Howard and seconded by Councillor Landis, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-nine November, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just before moving to the report, can I just make mention, of course, of some of the amazing things that have been happening around Brisbane? I already did that earlier in the evening, but I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that there are lots of amazing things happening. We had our Rotary Carols in New Farm Park on Sunday. It was a very, very long day, but it was fantastic to see so many locals come out and enjoy the Rotary Club sausages, of course, but our snow cones, I've been told on good authority, that's the only reason why the children forced all of their parents to come along, was that there were free snow cones. But the carols were fantastic. We had the Queensland Show Choir, as we have had for about the last six or seven years, and it was really great. And I really want to thank Victoria Carthu, who always donates her emcee experience. I believe she's a resident of yours, Councillor Cook, and so it's wonderful that she comes across the river and does our carols for us, which was fantastic. I also want to make mention of the Brisbane Greeters, I also want to make mention of the Brisbane Greeters briefing and tour of the Brisbane Metro Information Centre, through you, Mr. Chair, to Councillor Murphy. It was a very popular day. The Brisbane Greeters had the most fantastic time. It was a day that it all turned cold, and everyone was, it was raining, but they just had the best experience. And can I just encourage everyone to encourage their residents to go along to the Brisbane Metro Information Centre, because it's a great, it's a great opportunity? And the other, the other, the other thing that I took, that I participated in was the Chriselis Project, You're in the Circles, which was talking about some of the amazing people in and around Brisbane, and everyone collaborating to make it a really safe city. So that was fantastic. I also want to add my thanks to all of those people who've been thanked previously, and so I won't go over them, but I do want to say to Tash Tobias and her team, a huge, huge thank you. It's been a big year, but we've, we've all worked together, and I think one of the things that I neglected to mention was that this year, we celebrated ten years of River City Pride. Now, that seems a long time, really. So it was in twenty-twelve that we saw the establishment of River City Pride, which is council's LGBTIQ-plus employee network. I want to call out Luke Nixon and David Mann. David was the founder and has been recognised nationally with an award. Our programme has been recognised nationally, and I really want to say a big, big thank you to all of our employees who participate in the fantastic opportunities that Brisbane City Council affords. So what started as a commitment to give a voice to LGBTIQ-plus employees has resulted in a lasting legacy of LGBTIQ-plus inclusion, and so happy tenth birthday, River City Pride. On that note, I would like to move to our report, which was about rebuild and recover, support for connected communities from connected communities. And again, the present, the presenters of this report are nothing short of miraculous. It was a fantastic report because it was able to bring together all of the things that these wonderful people have been doing since we were impacted by the floods in February. And it's been a long journey, but they were able to talk to us about the work that they had done to get funding from the state government, the collaborative approach that was taken with that, and they're really looking forward to working with each and every one of you to ensure that our communities are built back better, and of course, much more resilient. So a big thank you, particularly to the team that presented on the day. We also had a petition requesting council improve the drainage around the two playing fields of Ridge Hills United Football Club to enable both junior and senior club players to use both fields following rainfall, and that was addressed in the committee, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Cumming?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, in relation to, I'm speaking on item B. Look, there seems to be a conflict as to the facts in this matter. The paragraph seventeen of the report says, as such, council officers agreed no additional drainage treatments were required to keep the fields in playable condition following heavy rainfall. Well, the club doesn't believe that. The club believes that further work is required, and obviously, the council should pay for it. And I would have thought with the attitude of the council officers to the matter that the club is unlikely to get a grant, because it'll be rejected on the basis of a lack of merit. And I don't think that's a satisfactory response to no doubt hard-working volunteers that run the club. They're effectively being given the brush-off. Council needs to do better, and will be opposing the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to respond to, to take a moment to refer to the relevant information that was listed within the petition response. And as the petition states, the club has received significant support from council through a number of programmes over the years, particularly as it relates to keeping their sports field maintained. The club's sports fields are designed so that the water runs off to the sides following rainfall, maintaining a suitable playing surface. On the fourth of May, twenty-twenty-two, council representatives met the club president, and it was noted at the time that the swales were facilitating the flow of water off Field One, and were working as intended. Council officers agreed that no additional drainage treatments were required to keep the fields in a playable condition following heavy rainfall. And over the past few years, the club has seen an investment of around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars under our sports field remediation programme, representing our support to see this site activated. So I understand that this petition was received by council one month after the organisation renewed their lease of the facility, and council officers will continue to work with this organisation, who will receive further support from council under the twenty-two, twenty-three Sports Field Improvement Works Programme. Thank you.
Thank you. And now put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division caused by Councillor Cumming and Councillor Cook. Please ring the bells. Eyes to the right, nose to the left. Close the bars, please, Billings. Thank you. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being seventeen in favour, three against, and one abstention.
Declare that motion carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of November, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Cunningham and seconded by Councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-nine November, twenty-twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Before I get to the report, I want to place on record my thanks to the whole portfolio team, but especially to Anne, Tim, and Mark Russell, who have, I have been working closely with this year. Thank you very much for your efforts and for putting up with me. And I'd like to extend the thanks to the councillors who serve on the committee, as well as my office team of Fee, and Dean, and Mark, and Aaron, and Rachel. So thank you very much. Now, before I get to item A, I want to provide information in response to Councillor Johnston's question to the Lord Mayor in question time. So there were dozens of creeker lurks sent out for Oxley Creek and its tributaries during council's warning system, which was used in the lead-up to the February and March flooding. It's hard to know exactly where to start, but we'll start with Wednesday, the twenty-
Point of order. Point of order, Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. The question was, what was the first one, the date, time, and the text of the first one? So just to make it easy for everyone, that's what I, that's what the question was.
I believe Councillor Cunningham is responding to that question. I don't uphold your point of order, Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So we'll start with Wednesday, the twenty-third of February, at three fifty-two AM, when an alert was sent, reading, 'Water level is rising in Rocky Waterholes Creek. Possible flash flooding in the next half hour.' By Thursday night, at ten twenty-three PM, we had a warning of flood alert, Rocky Waterholes Creek. The Muriel Avenue gauge reports the water level has flooded. There are plenty of- There are plenty of more where that came from, Mister Chair, and if the councillor would like more information on these warning messages, she's well aware of the formal process available to request the information. Item A, Mister Chair, is the committee presentation, which was from the City Resilience Branch Manager on the recent LDCC exercise. This was the annual exercise, but of course it was a very important one this year, because it was the first exercise after the floods. The exercise scenario and scope was developed taking into consideration post-flood event debriefs and internal and external reviews, including, of course, the De Jersey review. All of these have resulted in a number of process and system improvements for our council in twenty twenty two. The exercise provided the opportunity for Brisbane's LDCC to practise the refreshed systems and processes and ensure we are ready to respond. The outlook presented by BOM also presents us with an increased need for city resilience to exercise the LDCC in a river flood scenario. I want to thank all the council staff who put their hands up to be part of this, and especially to the city resilience team for their policy and coordination work. Thirteen councillors attended, including myself, and it was a great chance to see the council officers in action. Item B, Mister Chair, is the monthly bank and investment report for October, and I'll leave debate to the chamber.
Is there any further debate? No further debate? I move the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Sri Ranganathan, would you please move your motion?
Thanks, Chair. I move that Brisbane City Council resolves to produce concept designs for safe, separated bike lanes running along Vulture Street West End and Montague Road West End. Brisbane City Council recognises that subject to further detailed consultation with residents and other stakeholders, it may be necessary to remove the majority of street parking bays from along the northern side of Vulture Street and the eastern side of Montague Road in order to create enough space for bike lanes.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Sri Ranganathan, seconded by councillor Johnston, that Brisbane City Council resolves to produce concept designs for safe, separated bike lanes running along Vulture Street West End and Montague Road West End. Brisbane City Council recognises that subject to further detailed consultation with residents and other stakeholders, it may be necessary to remove the majority of street parking bays from along the northern side of Vulture Street and the eastern side of Montague Road in order to create enough space for bike lanes. Is there any debate? Councillor Sri Ranganathan?
Thanks, Chair. The motion's relatively self-explanatory, so I won't discuss it at great length. The main purpose of bringing this here today is to clearly indicate my support for the need to potentially remove some street parking bays from these corridors in order to create room for bike lanes. I know that can be a difficult conversation, and I want to be very clearly on the record that I think that's a necessary step for these two road corridors. I've already conducted a great deal of consultation with the community through a wide range of formats, from online voting to in-person community meetings, and I'm satisfied that the vast majority of residents and other stakeholders do support removing that street parking to create bike lanes. For anyone who's interested, the main factors weighing in in favour of bike lanes on the eastern side of Montague Road and the northern side of Vulture Street are that those are the sides of the road where there are fewer side streets or difficult driveways, and high-volume side streets in particular. There are added advantages to those sides that I'm happy to discuss at great length, if any councillors are particularly interested. But the these two corridors are both extremely high volume already for cyclists and e-scooters. We're seeing more and more two-wheel devices being used along these corridors, and I think it's quite important that we get those e-scooters in particular off the narrow footpaths and that they have their own safe, separated lanes to operate in. The Vulture Street link in particular is quite crucial to get cyclists back towards the Wall and Gabba Bike Way, the Mater Hospital, and the Goodwill Bridge precinct. And and Montague Road is an essential active transport corridor. We do already have a secondary bike way corridor along Riverside Drive, but that doesn't connect to all the shops and other destinations along Montague Road itself. So we need bike lanes along Montague Road and Vulture Street as soon as possible, and this motion is intended to signal that the these are high priority corridors and that there is support for making those tough decisions around the removal of street parking, at least from the local councillor. So I encourage all councillors to vote in favour of this motion, and I'm happy to discuss things offline if people want further detail. Cheers.
Further debate? Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to make a few comments regarding the resolution and also some background to this. Councillors may recall that in October of twenty twenty, the former member for South Brisbane, one Jackie Trad, made a commitment to the community that the state government would engage council to do a study of the Montague Road corridor. The state government has written to us and offered us a million dollars, as we as effectively we would be their clients, to deliver the study. The study would include a range of options and a range of consultation with the local residents. That is something that we intend to do. This resolution speaks to a number of determinations, which I am reluctant to support before consultation has occurred. The key part of the study would be consultation with the local community and the Greens' proposal to remove car parking and install bike lanes may be one option that can be considered. However, it would be premature at this time to make that decision without the consultation. And for that reason, I move that the motion lie on the table until the Montague Road corridor study has progressed and a community consultation has occurred.
Seconded. Councillor Wines has moved a procedural motion, that this motion lie on the table. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. This motion now lies on the table. General business? Is there any general business?
What about petitions?
Oh, sorry, my correction, petitions? I missed petitions. Petitions? Are there any petitions? Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I have a petition regarding road safety on Redwood Street, Stafford Heights.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I have two petitions, one calling on Brisbane City Council to increase the frequency of the one oh six bus service as part of the Brisbane Metro Bus Network review, and a second petition, which is already, this is a hard copy, which has already been tabled for calling for an improvement to stormwater drainage systems in Yorongkili. Thanks, Billy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further petitions? Councillor?
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Sri Ranganathan, that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned committees concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor's general business? Are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee report or committee order? No one standing? Councillors, are there any items of general business?
Just a quick one to say Merry Christmas, everyone. I hope you get to spend some time with loved ones and friends and family. Cheers.
Any further general business? There being no one standing, no further general business, I'd just like to say thank you to Dorian and Courtney on behalf of all the councillors here, and to the other clerks, Mark, Megan, Victor, and Katie. Thank you very much for your perseverance with us during this session and indeed throughout the whole year. Thank you very much to the clerks. Thank you. I declare the meeting closed.